Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Fillmore City Council meeting for Tuesday, October 9th. Welcome. And I would like to ask our pleasure to rise to the Pledge of Allegiance, led by Councilman Conway.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. And our next item is the road call. And I would like to state for the present that all council members are present and accounted for receiving. Next item is approval of the agenda.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? None. The next item is presentations and announcements. I do have one presentation this evening that I'd like to start off with, and I'd like to ask Deputy Jerry Peterson to meet me at podium. Uh-oh. Something's changed here. Okay. Well, Deputy Peterson and everybody else will read this. Whereas in 1985, Jerry Peterson and his wife Barbara, is that Barbara? Moved to the city of Fillmore where they still reside, and Jerry began his law enforcement career. And whereas over the next 27 years, Jerry's assignments have included traffic officer, investigator for major traffic collisions, field training, officer patrol, school resource officer, bike patrol team member, public information officer for the city of Fillmore, patrol officer, and special enforcement team member. And whereas during Jerry's career, he has assisted in streamlining the station's computer system, served as coordinator for the Fillmore Citizen Patrol, conducted research that resulted in a new city ordinance for daytime curfew, which reduced daytime crime within the city, participated in the Fillmore Alcohol Decoy Bike Program, and represented law enforcement on the Youth Festival Steering Committee. And whereas during Jerry's distinguished career, he has received awards including 1985 Officer of the Year, Kiwanis Club of Ventura, February 1995 Fillmore Employee of the Month, and in 2021 he was recognized as the City of Fillmore Officer of the Year. And whereas Jerry has received many commendations from regional agencies, including the California Highway Patrol in 1985, Fillmore Chief of Police Richard Diaz in 1987, the Ventura County District Attorney's Office in 2008, and again in 2009, the Sheriff's Office Crisis Intervention Team in 2010, and in 2009 from Sheriff Bob Brooks. And Fillmore Unified School District Superintendent Jeff Sweeney calling Jerry an invaluable resource and praising Jerry for his role in safety and security of the students, faculty from outside influences. And whereas, as he has for years, Jerry plans to remain very active within the community by continuing to serve as an umpire for the Little League Baseball and Little softball programs in Fillmore. And now therefore be it resolved that I, Dale Wash, for the other cities of Fillmore, and on behalf of the City Council, do hereby commend Deputy Jerry Peterson upon his retirement, and do hereby ask all those present to congratulate Jerry and thank him for his distinguished service to the city of Fillmore, the last best small town in Southern California.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.[352.12][352.12][S01. You don't get away yet. As your police chief and captain for the sheriff's office, Jerry, everybody should know, 31 years in law enforcement is not an easy task at all. And he's going out not on a medical retirement, but a full retirement that he's truly earned and worked very hard for in this city. And Jerry is one of the original Fillmore police officers, and got absorbed by the sheriff's office in 1987 when we contracted with the sheriff's office. And at that time, Jerry was fortunate enough not to have to work our detention facility. So he's quite lucky in that respect. But also, Jerry was the first school resource officer in the city of Fillmore, and at that time, there were some really tremendous problems on the school grounds with safety. And Jerry made such an impact, they kept him there for eight and a half years. And in talking to the current principal, new principal today, and superintendent, the value of a school resource officer on the campus really came out of Jerry's initial work there at the school grounds, and really made it a safe haven for learning, which is tremendous. So I, especially Sheriff Dean of the sheriff's office, congratulate you. And tomorrow night, we're going to have a little celebration in Ventura honoring Jerry and his lovely wife Barbara for all your years of service. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. And I have some announcements from other council members. Councilman Sykes?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. On Thursday, October 11th this week, the Fillmore Chamber of Commerce will be hosting a mixer for a local downtown merchant, KSSP Photograph Studio. It will be from 5:30 p.m. to 7:30 p.m., and it's located at 330 Central Avenue. On Friday, October 12th, there will be a luncheon sponsored by the Fillmore Chamber of Commerce. It will be at El Pescador, and the topic that will be discussed is economic development, which affects all of us. And it will be presented by Bruce Stinsley, President and CEO of Economic Development Collaborative with the county of Ventura. And that begins at 11:30 a.m. to 12:30 p.m. It's free to chamber members, and it's $5 for non-persons. If you need more information, you can call the Chamber of Commerce at 805-524-0351. Thank you.
Any other announcements from council? No? I have a few. I think everybody got this invitation from the Pacific Coast Pipeline Fillmore Site Tours, that the EPA and Chevron are conducting the tour on October 18th at 3 o'clock and 5:30. There's, I'm pretty sure everybody got this. I just want to encourage you to take the tour if you got the notice. I think you'll get a lot out of it. Also, I wanted to let everybody know, last Wednesday, the council was invited to a tour at the new school grounds, Rio Vista School down by the bridges. And Councilman Sykes and I attended, got a tour from the architects and the developer of the school, and I think everybody's going to be pleased with it. It's very thoughtfully designed, designed for 750 students. And as far as my understanding is that next year, 2013, fall of 2013, that the students from Sespe Elementary will be moved down to Rio Vista while they do repairs on Sespe Elementary. So there will probably be more tours, I'm hoping, as we move forward, and we'll let you know. Also, I have a, from our closed session, I have some notes that I wanted to read. We did have a discussion on the El Dorado Dorado case, and I have three comments that came out of closed session. First, on October 3rd, Judge Bish ordered the city to hold a new hearing on the El Dorado subdivision project. And the hearing must take place on or before January 8th, 2013. And the council has asked to hold the hearing on October 23rd, which will be our next council meeting. So any El Dorado residents are encouraged to come to that on October 23rd. On second, on September 24th, Judge Otero dismissed the second of two federal lawsuits without leave to amend. And I don't know all the details of the dismissal. Maybe we'll learn that later on. And third, El Dorado appealed the first of the, the first of the two federal lawsuits. El Dorado filed two federal lawsuits, and one has been dismissed, and the second they appealed, the second was dismissed and they appealed. And that appeal is now pending before the Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals, and the city does not expect a ruling for many months. So these things work slowly through the courts, and hopefully we'll have more information for you later on. Any other announcements? Nope? Okay. So we're going to move on to the consent calendar. Oh. We're going to move on to public comments. And I guess, I think the reason I went to the consent calendar was because I do have several comment cards for transportation. And are those willing to, wanting to speak on this item? Is that for the consent calendar item? Does anybody know? Is it? Okay. All right. So we'll do regular public comments, and then we'll call you guys up when we get to the consent calendar, will be items.
And I actually want to speak on something from us, from us, the previous council meetings.
So you want to speak during public?
Public comment.
Okay. All right. Well, I'll call your names, and if you want to speak on the transportation item, just tell me that you want to speak there. And if you want to speak on anything else, you can speak now. Okay. So I'll start with Daniel Gonzalez.
Martha.
Okay. Carla, do you want to speak on this item with the transportation consent?
Yeah.
Okay. And Iris?
Same.
Okay. And Cynthia Scoto? Okay. Hi.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Cynthia Scoto. I'm from One Step Calavés. So I just want to talk about something that was, I actually looked for a minute on the website, the city's website, for our last city council's meeting, and I couldn't find any minutes, so I don't know what action the council took on Agenda Item AD, which was, again, last meeting. And it was an approval of letter to the Ventura County Transportation Commission requesting reconsideration of its decision to divest itself of administration of the Vista Run 26. And so I wanted to say our position, One Step's position, and myself as a citizen, that we support that Fillmore joins the district, joining Gold Coast District. And we know that it's just, there's no increase in cost expected for users. We're guaranteed that we have bus service when the contract with Roadrunner expires. There's going to be maybe increased connectivity, and they're going to try to increase, improve local services. So I think that's it right now. Thank you. Oh, one more thing, sorry. The One Steps also has been working on since the summer, some help surveys in regards to the Pacific Coast Pipeline Superfund Site. And we're just asking for the citizens of Fillmore's support to participate in these help surveys. We're on the second leg of collecting these surveys, and we're asking everybody that's east of Mountain View just to continue to support us, and we'll be out there knocking on your doors, asking, you know, to participate in these surveys. Thank you.
All right. Mrs. Smart. Okay. Daniel, did you want to speak on public comment or on the consent calendar item for VCTs for the transportation?
Transportation.
Okay. I'll call you when we get to that. Okay. My next speaker card is for Rachel Parcell.
My name is Rachel Parcell. I'm with United Way of Ventura County, and I want to thank the mayor, the mayor co-chair, and all of the council members for having me here. I'm here to present a plaque to the city of Fillmore for their continued support of United Way. You have many employees who contribute through payroll, and then you have a large number of employees who volunteer their time, and we consider that extremely important to improve education income and health in Ventura County. So I will quickly read this to you. Presented to the city of Fillmore in recognition of your leadership, generous investments, and kind support towards improving your community and making positive changes now and in the future. Thank you, United Way of Ventura County. Thank you so much.
Next speaker, Lynn Edmonds. Did you want to speak on? Okay. And then I have a speaker card for Ms. Jean Wesley.
Before I begin, Madam Mayor, I request that my picture not be taken for the Gazette. Good evening, Mayor, City Council, and citizens of Fillmore. My name is Jean Wesley, and I live at 338 Condor Court. The last time I got up to speak before you was around the same time, two years ago, during the campaign for city council. If you remember, Roger Campbell took out a very nasty, full-page ad in the Gazette against one of the candidates I was supporting. In that ad, he used, without my permission, my Facebook photo and a statement I had made. I was livid and expressed my anger to Roger Campbell and Martin Farrell. After the council meeting that evening, Martin, Mr. Farrell asked me if I would like him to publish an apology. I was naive enough to think he would, and also hoped maybe this man was going to change.
She asked not to take her pictures, please.
Many people asked.
You need to respect the speaker's request.
You need to respect the First Amendment.
Whoa! Oh!
My picture better not be in your paper.
I guarantee you it will be.
She has the right to ask that you not take her picture.
I have the right to publish it by the First Amendment of our Constitution.
Mr. Brad? All right. Continue.
I was naive enough to think he would, and also hoped maybe this man was going to change. What he wrote in the following edition of the Gazette turned everything around in his favor, making it look like he was the victim. I'm still waiting for an apology. But the real reason I'm up here tonight is because of the nasty, brutal article Farrell wrote in his opinion section last week about my husband, Clay Wesley, our city clerk for the past four years. I have known my husband for 30 years, and he has a moral center, never lies, and has always been honorable, loving, and trustworthy. According to Farrell's article, he says that my husband is a terrible city clerk. I'm going to tell you that Clay takes great pride in his job, and is usually at his office daily by 8:30 and works until 12:00, and often returns to the office after lunch. From the beginning, Clay has made it a point to follow the government code as to what a city clerk's job is supposed to be. And just a reminder, there hasn't been a working city clerk in Fillmore since the 90s. If the public has been listening, they would know how busy this job is and what it entails. Farrell also says that Clay, quote, "refused to provide candidate notice to the Gazette or post the information about the upcoming election," unquote. But the Ventura County Election Division posted the notice in the Ventura County Star newspaper. There was no need to publish it in the Gazette because the Star has four times the circulation in Fillmore than the Gazette. And a press release was also given to all the newspapers. Mr. Farrell goes on to say that the city clerk did not post in the Gazette because Clay didn't want anyone running against him. That's preposterous. And look, he does have an opponent and nine other people running, so I guess they had adequate notice. Mr. Farrell is publishing false information. Mr. Farrell also states in his article that Clay, quote, "refused to accept candidate statements from Mr. Mim Harris and Mr. Tucker until unnecessary changes were made," unquote. That is not the case. Here is the election quote, code, quote, "Each candidate may prepare a candidate's statement of his/her own education and qualifications," unquote. And as a matter of fact, two years ago, Clay asked Councilman Brian Sykes to change his statement twice to better fit the code. Farrell goes on to say that Clay is self-serving. Well, that makes me sick to my stomach because Clay is one of the most giving, helpful, honest, and unselfish people around. He serves his community. He has a fair hand of style to help people in the city, and I'm sure if you would ask any of the public who have come in to speak with him, call him at his office or at home, they will attest to that fact. For all the hours he puts in, he receives $25 a month, and frequently drives to Ventura Government Center on City Business, and has never asked for a dime of gas allowance. Mr. Farrell states he has been trying to get information on one of our respected council members for some time now, and Clay has not responded. Farrell states he asked four times, but there are only two emails requesting the information. Both times, the records were provided. Okay. So those are the facts, and now the public is getting my opinion. I think Farrell is a terrible journalist, and I sincerely hope the school system is not using his newspaper as an example for our kids to learn from. The Gazette is not a paper of record. It is a paper of opinionated lies. I will make it one of my missions to spread the word to everyone I talk to to not waste their money on the Gazette. And one more thing before I close, I have to say that Clay did not put me up to speaking about this tonight. It's just that I'm sick and tired of that publisher of the Gazette blasting my husband and the other candidates with untruths. We should be working together to further the betterment of Fillmore. The Gazette is an obstacle to that end. Thank you.
All right. My next speaker card, Ms. Nora.
Good evening, Madam Mayor. Very uncomfortable, more nervous than usual. Good evening, Mayor and council. My name is Nora Amaro, and I reside at 165 Casner Way. Believe it or not, I'm shaking. That's heartbreaking, because I know Clay, and he, he has a heart as big as gold, so that's so unfair. I want to start out by talking about the sidewalk sales we had last Friday. They were a total success. I want to thank every merchant that participated. I'd like to thank all the public citizens that visited our stores. It was a very busy Friday, and I've talked to many of the merchants, and they were ecstatic. They thought like, wow, this was just really something. Whether they purchased or not wasn't the point. Just come visit us, see what we have. So starting from last week, the following businesses will be open every single Friday up until Christmas, from 7, up to 7:00 p.m., or maybe later depending on foot traffic. Vintage Pleasures, Cherry, Fox and Hound, Scented Path, Treasure Station, and possibly others. Please drive by and support our downtown Fillmore businesses. You don't have to buy, just come and see what we have. Okay, second, I want to talk about our annual Central Avenue Art Walk. It will be held this year again on Friday, excuse me, again on October, but it'll be Friday, October the 26th. I think it's two or three weeks from now. It'll be from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. Many, many different mediums of art will be on display at the following businesses. Vintage Pleasures, Cherry, Fox and Hound, Treasure Station, The Movie Train Cafe, Ballast Teas and Treats, Edison's Up in Arms, Attraction Spa, Scented Path, and KP Photography. Please come by and visit. It's free, it doesn't cost anything, you go out and have a good time. Okay, now the hard part. I want to talk about fundraisers and donations for candidates, whether they're local, here in Fillmore, the county, the state, wherever, it really doesn't matter. Small donations made by private citizens such as myself are looking for nothing in return. They are not kept secretly. After all, I don't accept, excuse me, I don't expect my small donation of $50 to help support certain candidates is going to pay my mortgage or buy me a new car. However, I do ask myself, why do these big money donors, corporations, what have you, want to stay secret? I doubt if they're doing this just from the goodness of their heart. I would hope so, but I highly doubt it. Contributing thousands, or tens of thousands, or even bigger depending what it's contributing for, concerns me. If the candidates they support get elected due to their big contributions, are they going to have to owe such big favors that in return us, the local citizens, are going to have to pay one way or the other? I'm not pointing fingers, but if candidates are being supported by secrets, and they really have no knowledge of themselves, I feel bad for them and us, because they don't know what, what or who they are dealing with. But on the other hand, if they do know these secret donations and possible favors to be paid out, and if they get a left wing, then I am truly concerned, because we, the citizens of Fillmore, are going to end up paying big. I beg all Fillmore voters, do your homework, get specifics, make sure you see them on paper of where all these big contributions are coming from. Don't be fooled by just taking someone's word. You may possibly pay for your mistake by voting for the wrong candidates with secrets. Thank you.
Thank you. Awesome. Thank you. All right. My next speaker is Ms. Marta Amoría Junos.
Marta.
Marta, okay.
Good evening. This is my first time here at the city hall.
You're welcome.
And it's nice to meet all of you guys. I will talk about, I hope that you understand my English, because I sent anyone to Eduardo Gonzalez, hoping that he speaks Spanish and he can understand what I want to say. I want to talk about the wild bills. I don't know when, when this will be stopped. I don't know when or when this will be stopped because every month we get a raise for $2 or $3. The people don't raise any $3. I get a raise for $0.2 every year. I don't know what I do, who's do that or when will it stop? It's all my concern because people in Fillmore is a poor people. I send all of you guys email just one people reply. You are in the seat and your chairs to serve people, and I hope that you can help us to down with us Walbees and sue them because people don't have jobs, people have retired, people is poor in Fillmore, and we are tired to pay hard bills. Thank you.
Thank you, and we truly understand your concerns. We all feel the same way. Unfortunately, those decisions were made in 2006, and there's nothing to be worried about.
We are running away to be last year over too.
Okay. My next speaker is Ms. Sandy Pella.
Good evening, Mayor Washburn, Pro Tem Brooks, and the rest of the council members. My name is Sandy Pella. I live at Eldorado Estates, space 308, and I am also a candidate running for a seat on the City Council. What I want to talk about tonight is ethics, and it's not a part of the agenda, eh, so that isn't a part of the agenda item. But I, two weeks ago, that was a very long process, the whole idea of what is ethical and not ethical was discussed in length. So I want to talk about ethics tonight. I want to talk about ethics with regard to campaigning. When I pulled my papers, my nomination papers to run, there was a document in that packet that had to do with conduct, and I had the option whether I wanted to sign it or not, but I did, and it had to do with conducting myself in an ethical manner. I have lived my life that way professionally and personally, so I had no problem signing it. And then the campaign started, and the first thing that happened is that we had the phone survey debacle. And that thing was scurrilous and unjust and confused a lot of people, and there was a uproar in the community. Then we had two mail pieces that came, and those mail pieces specifically attacked two incumbents and made false statements about them. Unethical, unethical to the nth degree. But what really brings me here tonight is something that has taught that and really disappoints me, is within the last two weeks, campaign signs that are personal property of candidate Washburn, Brooks, Wesley, and myself have been stolen. There are approximately 100 of these signs that have been removed in various locations throughout the city. Now, this doesn't seem to be a single occurrence. Approximately two years ago, when Councilmember Sykes was running for City Council, he had the same type of a situation when his campaign signs mysteriously disappeared as well when he had a successful debate. So, what's the possibilities? Well, one possibility is that we have some overactive pranksters, kids out in the community that think it's fun to steal signs. The only thing about that, that leaves a question there, is that these are very discriminating pranksters because they're only taking signs that have Washburn, Brooks, Wesley, and Pella on them, and they're leaving the others. I haven't seen kids do that. They would take the whole batch. In fact, one morning, I was, one evening, I drove home, and everybody's signs were on front of a business on 126. The next morning, about 7:15, when I drove by, I didn't see a sign that belonged to our campaign, or just the other signs there. So, this has gone from being unethical to unlawful, and that's why it's such a serious matter. Because according to California laws, personal property that is stolen and has a value of $400 or more is grand theft. That is a felony. So we're talking about a criminal act now, and I have a hard time believing that these are kids. So all I can do is assume that these are avid supporters who are trying to support their candidate in a wrong manner. So I forewarn anyone from trying to do that. We have, we make an error by not putting disclosure on our signs, and that disclosure says that this sign is paid for by whatever campaign it is, and that was an oversight, and unfortunately, we have to, you know, correct the ones that are out there, but these replacement signs will have the disclosures. What's sad about this is that we are not supported by any special interest or political group in any way, shape, or form. You heard Nora just a minute ago, the contributions that have come to these campaigns have come from individuals and businesses who have put their faith and trust into Washburn, Brooks, Wesley, and myself. I have aligned myself with these individuals because I believe that they have the same ethical code that I do, and I'm very proud to be associated with them. I'm sorry that we have to suffer this kind of effect. What I do want to do is I want to caution anyone who's supporting us that they would not do anything that would be unethical or unlawful to support us because it's a bad reflection on them and certainly a bad reflection on us as candidates. Thank you.
All right, my next speaker is Ms. Rose Delmar.
Hi, my name is Rose Delmar. You guys are all familiar with me. I live at 1412 Cottonwood Lane, and I kind of come here because I remember last time I came here, it was like... We need to really, things, there we go, and we need to really work together to stop this, whatever this is going on. It's like this little, what do they call it? sore that's just starting to fester, and certain people don't respect people's privacy. And it's really sad, and it makes, it hurts me because when they offend people that are close to me, they malign them, they injure them in a hurtful way, and they draw them to tears. That's unacceptable. And I think that we need to start with people. I won't mention names, and this is just, whatever, I won't mention names, but I'm kind of feeling like, why are we in this world if we're going to start insulting people about things that we don't even know about? I don't like to point fingers, I don't like to make suppositions, and, but when you take my really good friend over here and you hurt her feelings and you slander people for no good reason at all, you're not people, you're not even human, you're just a person who's a machine. All you do is put stuff out that doesn't help anybody. And I sure hope that you please stop what you're doing. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Delmar. Alex, did you have, just want, you don't have public comments, do you have specific agenda items?
Well, I did have two, but the reason I was late tonight is because I spent about the last hour and a half trying to print some of the details on the agenda tonight. My printer ran out, and I was wondering if there was an extra copy of A B.
A B?
Eight B.
Eight B? I don't, did you have a copy?
I think it's like, it was like five pages or something. I actually might have the first two pages, so I'll just need three or four in time.
Do you have a next one? Okay. All right. All right, my next speaker is Ms. Nancy Myers.
Hello, folks. My name is Nancy Myers. I'm running for city clerk, and I'd like to discuss the signs on this call. I've actually had signs taken down also. So while everybody's pointing fingers at the non-incumbents, maybe you could please ask the people that are taking down my signs to stop also. They're not being discriminative towards the incumbents. They have also taken mine. There is finger pointing, and I haven't done anything to any of the people, and I appreciate it if you all stopped also. Thank you.
I don't think we're 20, any fingers, sorry.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Martin Farrell, publisher of the Fillmore Gazette, declared at the last council meeting that he doesn't lie. Before I go further, I want to explain why I continue to talk about what Farrell says in the newspaper. I believe that democracy is worth fighting for. It is very special and very new to the human experience. Many have fought and died to ensure that every citizen in America has a voice in their government. We've all been taught that democracy depends on an informed electorate. We depend on the free press to be an important part of how we get our information. For the most part, the press tries to adhere to strict standards of journalism, and they do a credible job of informing us. The Fillmore Gazette is an exception. Over my 58 years living in Ventura County, I have read many what you would call local newspapers. The Ventura Star Free Press, the Oxnard Press Courier, the Camrio Daily News, the CB Valley Enterprise, the Santa Paula Paper, Moore Park Paper, and Thousand Oaks Paper. Most of these papers don't exist now, but not one of them was ever anything like the Fillmore Gazette. Every morning for 10 years, or four years, I have read the Ventura County Star and the LA Times. They do ethical journalism. By comparison, often you will read a story on the same topic in both the Star and the Gazette. In the Star's version, you will see quotes from people the reporter has interviewed on both sides of the issue, not so in the Gazette. I don't know if Councilmember Conway is ever interviewed by the Gazette, but if the other council members are ever called, it's happened so rarely that I don't remember it ever happening. Back to Martin Farrell's "I don't lie" statement to the council. Farrell said, quote, "Bob loves to characterize honest mistakes as lies. They are, of course, missing the central ingredient of intent to deceive," unquote. Let's allow the people to judge whether or not Martin Farrell lies by examining just one of his latest questionable statements. On September 19th, Farrell wrote, quote, "One of his," talking about Mayor Pro Tem Brooks, "first campaign promise was to limit the salary of city manager to about $85,000." He ended up voting our last manager a salary of about $160,000, highest ever, unquote. On September 25th, it was pointed out to Farrell that the salary and benefit package for the city manager was approved by the council in a 3-2 vote, with Brooks and Mayor Washburn voting no. Farrell's facts were wrong. Was the mistake on the 19th when he made the statement? Maybe. If so, did it become a lie when he failed to correct the mistake? By not correcting it, was his intent to deceive his readers? Are Farrell's readers well informed? Not yet, Mr. Farrell, but you can make the correction tonight about that one thing and in your next edition. One other point I'd like to talk about, in his last editorial, he said that he was going to pub, no, actually, when he spoke here, he said he was going to publish a whole list of lies that I told. Now, he's said that many, many times, and I've been looking forward to reading that list. I volunteered to donate money if he could prove some of the allegations that he's made. But he didn't publish that list because there isn't a list. And I don't know if it's just the idea that, you know, some people who regularly fabricate things think that everybody knows it, but I don't think very few people in the truth think that way. We all like the truth. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next part, speaker card is Mr. Gary Kriegel. It says four, is that open comments?
Mayor, City Council staff, my name is Gary Kriegel. I own property at 330 Central, Fillmore. I want to confirm Mrs. Pella's statement first. We have lost about 100 signs, and I would figure that in campaigns, if you lost 10 or 15 signs in the first couple of weeks, that would be normal malicious mischief or pilferage or something like that, or maybe the, maybe the property owner changed their mind. But 100, no. And I put up some of these signs, and they were difficult to get down, so they had to work at it. My next comment is, I'm really, people think I enjoy getting up here and speaking and things, but the reason I do, I feel that I need to, is because a lot of people in Fillmore send letters to the editor, the Gazette, and they give their opinions, and if Martin doesn't like their opinions, he would, he will not print them. And that's paramount right now. He's, we've sent several letters in, and they have not been published, so somebody has to get up here and tell the public the truth, the people out in TV land, so I feel it my duty to do so. Now, Martin said two weeks ago, when he apologized to me for me being in a fight when I was on the City Council in the 80s, he apologized that, well, I guess I wasn't in the fight after all. Well, everybody in town knows who was in that fight, and Mr. Farrell wasn't even there at the time. The only people that were there were the City Council, the city manager, and Dick Diaz in the chambers. He was not there. I don't know if you could, I don't know if you could define that as a mistake or a lie. I'll let, I'll let you people out of TV land make up your minds. But no, I was not in a fight. You couldn't really call it much of a fight anyway. Nobody, nobody got hurt or anything. There was no complaint filed. Chief Diaz at the time asked if anybody wanted to sign a complaint, and everybody declines and was a dead issue. It's funny that it was front page Star Free Press the next morning though, after a promise was made that it wouldn't be divulged. But Mr. Campbell is, that's the sort of way he does business. Now, back to mistakes. Now, Martin, you made another mistake this last week, I got to tell you, I don't know. You took a nice picture of me, and by the way, I decided to go on a diet because I, that camera really shows it. I've been, you know, I've been doing, I've been walking. I've been walking every day handing out our flyers, and I've lost about five or six pounds, thank you. But Jamie and I had permission from the general manager of Santa Fe Wyland. But you didn't check into that. You just made another mistake, is all you did, Martin. It wasn't a lie, it was just a mistake. But Martin, the trouble is, the people out there in Fillmore realize that if you don't correct your mistakes, they become worse than lies. They become malicious, low-down, scurrilous lies, because they're not corrected. So I don't know if you'll apologize to me, and I don't care. Speaking on the subject, you have gone over the top of the necessary criteria for me to sue you as a public person. You've met that, and I choose not to sue you, Martin, because you have absolutely nothing I want. Now, the handouts, my last thing, and I'll get off the stage. I find it ironic that the gentlemen that are running, they have a little-- they handed this out to most everybody in Fillmore. And the top five names in the first column are former Mayor Steve Conway, you support him, former Mayor Evaristo Barajas, he supports him, former Mayor Scott Lee, former Mayor Mike McMahon. Now, Manny, if you see Mike, would you ask him if he has any signs? We want him back. But the reason I say this, and Kim Smedley. These are the people who brought you the sewer plan, especially Mr. Conway. These are the people that have taken hundreds of dollars out of your pocket for the last few years. These are the people that are supporting these candidates. These are the people that you should run away from as fast as you can. Thank you.
I think that's all the speaker cards I have on open comment. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak? Anybody else who wishes to speak on an item that's not on the agenda? Okay, if not, then we're gonna move on to the consent calendar. And I'm going to pull Item C, which is the TDA issue. Oh, and Item 7A, we're going to pull. So that moves 7B and 7D.
Move and approve, Councilor, Items D and D.
Seven. I have a motion and a second. They say aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you. And I didn't pull it, but I did want to mention on Item D, which was approval of a CBG block grant in the county for code enforcement. I want to thank Mr. Steve Stewart for getting that, because we didn't have a lot of money for code enforcement, but the county's gonna help us with that grant. So with that, we're gonna move to Item 7A. And Mr. Molokoy, you have a question on Item 7A?
Yes. Good evening, Mayor, Council. I just had a couple of questions. On the page, let's see. Four of the consent calendar, there's an item for Questing Center Custom Signs for $156.85, and I would just like to know what those signs said.
Could you give a brief description of those signs?
Yeah. Environmental Health sent us a letter warning us that we had to clean the illegal dumping that is happening at the east end of the Questing Center. So with direction from Steve Stewart, for the help of Steve Stewart, we decided that we needed to get that cleaned up. So Harrison Industry was trying out to donate, to dump the roll-offs. In addition to that, I instructed Dave Smallwood to order signs, no dumping signs, with the ordinance on there, so we can, if we're able to witness and find someone that has illegally dumped, we can charge them for it simply, because we will, as a city, will get fined by Environmental Health for illegal dumping. It's no longer a dump site, so we have to post those.
So we're not talking like manure, we're talking like trash?
It's just trash, debris, as in like, there was drywall, two-by-fours, limbs, things of that sort. Manure.
I just wanted to verify that we weren't paying monies that the concessioners should be paying.
No, no, it all relates to our responsibility, so therefore, we need to put those signs up in a proper manner and enforce it.
The only other item that I question is for the Ventura County Sheriff's Department.
What page?
Page eight. I may be wrong, but somehow I have it in my head that the school resource officer was paid by grant. So I was wondering why.
The chief of all addresses.
The school resource officer is paid by two means. One, 50% Fillmore Unified School District. The other is a cop's grant, which goes directly to the city. So yes, the city would pay out of that cop's grant to find the officer.
So the city received the cop's grant, and now we're paying district to pay that money? Okay, that was my only question. I don't know.
All right, thank you. Okay, so can I get a motion to adopt the warrant?
Move and approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. This is a voice vote, Councilman Conway?
Aye.
Yes.
Yes. Aye.
Aye, my motion passes. All right, the next item is, I see this is adoption of the City Council Resolution 12-3360, and this is authorizing the filing of a claim with Ventura County Transportation Commission for allocation of Transportation Development Act funds for 2012, 2013, and authorizing staff to make appropriate budget adjustments. And I have speaker cards for this, so I will call the speakers up. Mr. Daniel Gonzalez.
Daniel, I think we decide to leave the entrance tomorrow, so we're able to wait.
Okay, how about Carla?
I'm Carla, I'm here for the transportation. And I'm studying here at Fillmore High School. And every morning, I have to wake up, go to school, and if I don't get ready on time, I have to take the vest of us. If the vest of us is full, I have no way, and I have to get the next bus. And it's every hour, and I think they should make it every half hour, so more people can fit on the bus, because I don't think it's fair. And sometimes, people that are going somewhere else instead of school, they give them the seats first. And if they run back on by schedule, they keep you from waiting. From like, they tell you 7:15, they come around 7:40, 7:12 before you have to be, so they make you run late. And at times, before they stop, they open the door, and it's like telling you to get off early. And the costs are going up higher.
Did you have a question?
How often do you have to take at least the bus because you miss the school bus?
There's two school buses, but if they get full, there's no way, because there's no other buses.
The school bus?
The school bus.
The school bus?
Yeah, and if people don't find the first bus, you have to wait to the second bus. If the second bus gets full, and you don't get on it, you're gonna have to take the vest of us. If the vest of us does not have any more room, you're gonna have to wait to the next bus. If the next bus is full, you have to wait until there's any space left.
So it is not that you're actually missing the bus, because you're gonna lay or things like that. It's actually that the buses, the school buses are full, and you're not able to get in?
Yeah. And I also use it to go to the program on Step Out of Wes. And since we have a week off, to do hours to go help out, I have to go on the buses. And when we have a meeting, and I call the bus an hour before my meeting starts, they come late, and they delay my meetings.
So are you talking about double ride, or are you talking about the buses running?
Around town.
Around town. So you're talking about the large buses?
The little buses.
The little buses?
Yes.
Best double ride. Well, one of the reasons we wrote the letter that we wrote to the Transportation Commission, we are interested in joining with the county, but we also want to preserve double ride. At the moment, we cannot increase the number every half hour, because the funds are just not there. And it's possible that in joining with the county, we could have less buses for double ride, you know, because of higher prices of the county. Hence, we wrote a letter saying we want to preserve what we have. I wish we could give you double buses too, but we are trying to preserve what's there now. And because transportation around Fillmore is a very critical issue. I appreciate you coming in and sharing your personal firsthand experience.
Thank you, Colonel.
One more question. Have you talked to the school district about the buses situation? They're full, and you're missing them? You're missing the bus because they're full already? Have you talked to the school district at all?
They say that it's our responsibility to get rid of buses. And if there's no way, they still count us as absent or tardy. And they take that away, and whatever time you miss, or whatever segment you miss, we have to make it up.
I understand that, but the situation, as I understand from you, is that it is not that you're missing the bus, but actually, the buses are full, and you're not able to get inside the bus. Is that correct?
Yes.
So it's not like you're late? Or is it, or is it that you're actually on time, and the buses, you won't stop because they're full? What situation is?
It's the vest of buses are full, the little small ones.
I'm talking about school bus?
The school bus. Sometimes they run late, because it's one bus, it has to come twice. So the first route is one where it's the central, where one half of Piru gets it. And then the people that live on the northeast side, they have to be on the bus. If that bus gets full, they're gonna have to walk to the other bus stop, which is located at the other end of Piru. If that bus gets full, and they don't have room, they're gonna have to take the vest of us.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Colonel. Iris, did Iris have to speak? Lynn.
Good evening. Good evening, everyone. My name is Lynn Evans, and I live at 434th Street. One Step Out of Wes has been concerned about transportation for several years. And we've done a lot of research into it. And we noticed on the agenda today, on the consent agenda, that there's some extra money, and it was going towards road improvement. But that was the recommendation of the staff. We have some real concerns about that, because the money is not supposed to go to road improvement and tell all the unmet needs are met. And we have some serious unmet needs. As I'm sure you know, we have the highest rate of youth percentage, of youth that are involved in the juvenile justice system in the county. We have the highest rate of unemployment in the county. Both of those are affected by transportation. If a youth is given a citation, they're expected to go to Oxnard for an evening movie. They can't get to Oxnard, and so their citation is increased, is given a higher rate. Eventually, some kids get involved in the justice system simply because they don't have the transportation in order to get where they need to go. If you try to get to a job interview, and you live in Fillmore, and you don't have a car, you can't get there unless it's at the mall, or at the jail, or at the government center. Because the earliest transportation out is at 7:00 in the morning, and the latest one back is at 8:00 in the evening. But if you ask for a transfer, because we are not aligned with the county with the other transportation systems, the transfer time is huge, and it will take sometimes six to eight hours to get to Oxnard. So you are putting people who are unemployed in an unemployable situation because of the transportation. The last bus back to Fillmore comes at 8 o'clock at night. There's one at 5:00, one at 6:00, one at 7:00, and one at 8:00. But the bus goes empty back to the government center where the buses end up. The one goes out, the last bus back to Ventura is at 5:00. It goes back at 6:00, goes back at 7:00, goes back at 8:00, but they go back empty. We are one of the largest population areas where people could get jobs, and it's very close to Piru and Fillmore, is Santa Clarita. And there's been very little attempt to have a bus that goes from Ventura to Santa Clarita. If the cost, according to the data from BCTC, the cost for the fixed route buses, the large buses, is much less expensive, up to $20 less expensive per rider than dioride. I do feel dioride is important, but primarily for handicapped or senior citizens. It's only a mile square in Fillmore. You can walk, and I can walk if I can walk, anybody can walk. And if the fixed route that's recommended on Plan B of the Heritage Valley Transportation Plan shows a fixed route that would go through Fillmore, therefore, people wouldn't have to walk as much. A fixed route that goes through Piru, a fixed route with a larger bus that would accommodate everyone, so that people would have the chance to get places on time and not be subject to the whimsy or the size of the bus. If you're living at Rancho Sespe, the bus will often stop, but not even open the doors, because Piru already has filled the spaces. And so Piru is called up, but Rancho Sespe doesn't even get on. They just have to wait until the bus comes in and opens the door to let them on. So we do have a lot of unmet needs, and I hope that you will reevaluate this and see if there's any way that that-- if I counted it right, it was up to about $70,000, between $33,000 and $70,000 that were available. If some of that could be to improve the services that we have before-- I live by a really bumpy road, and I would love to have my road fixed, but I would rather have people have jobs, and kids have the chance to get to their probation and to court. To get to court, the transfers are so difficult. So anyway, we have unmet needs, so please don't spend that money. And I wanted to respond to your question. The law says that schools are not required to get kids there. It's a parent's responsibility. So the school does provide transportation, but they can't be accountable if there are too many people on that bus.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Evans. Yeah, go ahead, please, making comments if you need to.
Well, I think we need to discuss it before making the motion. $70,000 will not run extra buses at this moment. We are connected with the county. I agree with much of what you said, and I disagree with much of what you said, Ms. Evans. And, and I, and I do realize that in, in our county, there is a need to consolidate and, and bring services under one umbrella. We, we understand that, but it's not gonna happen countywide. Because SEME, Thousand Oaks, Westlake, Camborillo are gonna do their own transportation system. It's, that's a done deal, they've already decided. And so that means Oxnard, Ventura, Ojai, Santa Paula, and Fillmore. And Santa Paula and Fillmore has, our dial-a-ride is our taxi for Fillmore and Santa Paula. And I would respectfully disagree, because I understand you've studied this a long time. And there's, and I disagree with some of the people in VCTC who are very honorable, very knowledgeable, and they won't fix buses going around Fillmore. And I just know so many seniors that go, to go across town, to go across 126, they're not gonna walk. He's just not gonna do it. You know, it's just too dangerous, it's too scary for them to go to the doctor, you know, or whatnot. So what we decided in the last meeting was to put out a letter to say, "We are very concerned for dial-a-ride." So what we want is the whole Angelina. We want the whole bump to buy, is that we want to try to preserve dial-a-ride and still come under a county system. And that there would be fixed routes, yet they would understand that we, they can, they can sub out dial-a-ride to Fillmore, because we're doing it so well and doing it at such a low cost. How that, if you, if we state that need, then we can come together in negotiations and say, "How can we make this work?" So right now, I don't think it's an either-or. As far as this particular money is concerned, we have a, for this year, for this two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen year, the needs are met, the budget is already set, and we have an opportunity to use seventy thousand dollars for roads. So I'm, I'm one that says, "Let's use it for, for the roads," because we, we do have a functioning dial-a-ride, we do have buses set. It is, it is gonna be a question whether or not cities can still use that in, in the future. And, and, and we may, as a council, come to the decision, "No, we need to put it all in transportation." But I, I don't, see, cause there's really two, you can, you can come back and answer. There's really two discussions going on. One's about the seventy thousand right now on road, and one's about how do we become under the umbrella of the larger system? Which we are now, but a different one.
I forgot to mention students. With colleges losing money and having, and limited classes, kids are having to take classes at night. Our kids can't get to classes at night because the last bus leaves the college at seven. Many of the classes are after seven. A lot of our kids have to work. So they're enforced to buy cars, not use public transportation. And I agree with you that the seniors need to have a ride across the highway. That's why I think seniors and handicapped always need to have access to dial-a-ride. I do not think it needs to be only me, who would love to take a ride to Curves so I can exercise, but it's not necessary. It is not necessary. We can walk, and it would be good for us to walk. I think we're dealing with a fixed amount of money. We're not dealing with, I mean, we would love to have everything. We're not dealing with everything, we're dealing with fixed amount. I think we should get the most, most service for the amount of money that we have. And to, to us, and we studied it. We think the best service is to provide larger fixed route buses, more extended hours, and then, and lower the number of dial-a-ride, simply because dial-a-ride is much more expensive.
Well, that's really a different discussion than this particular item, this particular.
You said unmet needs.
I, I understand, so I, and, and I, I would agree that you, you have a good point. You're saying we have unmet needs, so you should put it to the road, and so, and that's your, your earnest opinion. And, and I, and what I'm trying to say is, we have really two discussions going on. We have a discussion of the long term, what is Fillmore gonna be, right? And then right here, you're saying, "Well, this money should go back to transportation and not for roads."
And one route, and one, or, or.
It's not, it's.
Or should we go back?
I, I understand. And, and, and my understanding is, this amount of money is not going to change the route.
I don't know, I don't know.
Yeah, and if we could hear from the finance director, is this a, the TDA funds are least required to be used for streets?
Your local transportation money first is to be used to meet transit needs. If there is any money left over, then it can be used for only street and road purposes. So I'm not involved with setting the bus.
Right, right.
Schedule or the amount of money that's allocated. The county, basically, VCTC tells me, "This is the amount of money that you're getting. This is the amount that's gonna go to Vista. This is then the amount that's left over," which in this case was about thirty-three thousand for this year. And then there was about eighteen thousand left over from last year. So I know to some people that sounds like an awful lot of money, but when you're operating a bus, that's not an awful lot of money. And so then they say, "You can use that money, but you can only use it for street and road purposes." So that's, and we have to file a claim to be able to do that, to take whatever balance we have left, to be able to use it for street and road purposes.
Okay, thank you. And I, I, I will say that Councilman Brooks, we're, and all of us are aware that Fillmore, and even VCTC admits that we have the greatest needs, the greatest unmet needs for transportation. VCTC, they're kind of trying to get out of the, providing those services to us. And that's why they're going to Gold Coast, but as Glenda says, we don't get to set the schedule. As much as Councilman Brooks attends those VCTC meetings and advocates for the city, I think he's doing the best he can, and VCTC has given us what.
Well, I'll say the rest of the county, it, it is the commission that works together for cities. And, and yes, there's, there's going to be some compromise coming together, this long-term thing. But this money's, which is, is ninety-seven, seventy thousand. This, uh, this money has been identified by the VCTC saying, "We've already, what we've given you, what we've scheduled for you, Fillmore, and the bus is running, all those bills are paid, and this is what's left over." You know, and so I, I don't think they're, they're, they're able to add another bus, because you'd have to go and lease another bus, and leasing of the bus is way too much.
We have three buses that go back empty because they were too small, so maybe that would pay for those two buses. I would shut it.
Well, no, no, you're saying, that's your, that's your, you're right to say that, yeah, right. So, yeah. Okay, so we have the facts, and we can make our decision, I guess.
I have some more speaker cards. Cindy?
Good evening again. Just wanted to make a point of information, I guess. I know this is speaking about the unmet needs, but actually, the Heritage Valley, or not the, the VC Regional Transit Study says that if the, if we do consolidate, they're not gonna cut dial-a-ride, so it doesn't say that in the study. And then, I know this is a different discussion, but I just wanted to.
No, no, my, my point is, that has not been determined at all whatsoever.
Well, the study, I mean, it says that.
The study is a study.
Yeah.
So they, they didn't say, they just didn't recommend that we cut down, but the decision has never been made about that.
Yeah, I do think that.
Right.
And then also, again, I'm just, you know, there's a lot of unmet needs to just take into consideration, you know, the college students, the students of Piru and Rancho Sespe, the One Step students. Part of One Step is that we're working with advocacy, and we speak to the bus riders. We've actually formed a bus riders' union. And so before, you know, taking this forward, I just recommend that you guys, you know, converse with bus riders, even though you're saying it's a matter for VCTC. And see what the bus riders speak, and what the bus riders feel about, you know, UK forty-four or.
I, I think we would agree with them, and, and we agree with you.
Yeah.
I think to add the routes, there's more, would be more than, than any of us would be able to get.
And then also, just, just wanna stress that the One Step does have transportation meetings weekly, and everyone's invited, so I mean, matters like this, we would also love to discuss amongst the students and the bus riders.
When was your transportation meetings, Cindy?
We have them every Thursday at four thirty.
Four thirty?
Four thirty, at the One Step. And we've partnered with Cabrillo Cause to form the bus riders' union as well. So we meet monthly, and we've actually had a couple forums, and Jamie Brooks has attended one of them, so. Yeah, so just wanted to say that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Alex, did you have a comment on this?
Yep, Alex Mulcoy, Third Street here in Fillmore. My question is, has to do with transportation, but I was recently approached by a citizen that needed to travel to Santa Clarita, and she was expressing to me that there is no San, no transportation to Santa Clarita, the end of line is Piru. And I was wondering if there hasn't ever been any outreach with the transportation in Santa Clarita and to get the two connected, so that not only could we travel to Santa Clarita on a bus, but the Santa Claritans could travel to Fillmore or Piru on the bus.
Councilman Brooks, what was that? It has been discussed.
Yes, there is discussion, but it's high in the sky because of the economy. So, I mean, Santa Barbara has, we have a run to Santa Barbara with Vista. And a lot of that is because Fillmore and Vista, and VCTC, the, the staff, having run the Vista, done so well that we could supply a bus to Santa Barbara, but you need to understand that Santa Barbara County has a tax, Santa Barbara City, excuse me, Santa Barbara City has a tax that kicks in like seventy percent of the cost of that bus. So Ventura couldn't even afford it by itself, let me see. With Santa Clarita, it's talked about, but the, the county and, or the city has never, never said that they particularly wanna put any money in that at this time. So it's like, "Oh yeah, we'd be glad to have it if you want to do it." Innocent, this is my, just opinion, my opinion is, we need them more than they need us. You see, if, if people go to work in Santa Clarita, they don't really have a need to bus people from Fillmore to Santa Clarita. We have more than need to bus people to Santa Clarita than they do to see.
Right, but they have the money.
They're not needing enough money at the moment, okay? Maybe somewhere down the line, but one thing is, Ventura County needs to be a little bit more consolidated before that can even happen, which is in the process of happening. But, you know, everyone's saying, we're trying to preserve the, what works now as we transition something in our home county. We do have agreements with Santa Barbara, and a lot of that's because of Santa Barbara's foresight to pass a, a sales tax, actually, a best-of that years ago.
Uh, Santa Clarita has a huge business commerce center.
Yes.
On, on, on the west end of their town.
They just haven't reached out to us. Maybe when they still run all these apps.
Providing any jobs for Fillmoreans, and.
I understand, but.
So I think maybe there should be somebody to speak up and if they keep saying no, keep asking, because if you keep asking, at maybe one point, they'll just say, "Yes." That's what.
Well, that's like everything else, you have to have feasibility. And you have to have a, it's supply and demand, there's not enough demand Fillmore and there's not enough funds to, to cover some of the county. As I said, you know, we don't need buses running at the, at the college and, and, at night. So there's not enough demand to go to, to Santa Clarita, although it has been talked about. As well as maybe one day of training going through, but that's still, it's all thoughts and plans.
I mean, to catch the metro, I think you have to, like, walk over the mountain to Fillmore.
Exactly, yeah, exactly. You are an isolated.
Maybe a park trolley we have, sir, or.
Uh, that's possible too.
You know, I, I think that, and hopefully I can get into the ears of somebody, but that, actually, that is not a bad idea. And, and hopefully I can, somebody can hear me this, with the funds, to, as a private enterprise, may not be a bad choice.
Maybe we could shave just a sliver of that high-speed rail money.
Yeah, the cost, you know how much Fillmore would have to pay for that. But maybe we can have, and hopefully somebody in the, listen to us on TV, and maybe somebody here may have, may bring some private enterprise to put a line that goes from here to Morepark, and maybe from here to, to, to Santa Clarita, stop inviting, leasing the gas station in Piru. I invite anybody.
Are you listening to Chaplin Horse?
And if I don't want to get into that business.
I'm just trying to point out that they're, they're our close neighbors, and so I think we need to work on tying them.
You have an excellent idea, but instead of having government trying to fix the problem, maybe a, a private enterprise will be a fantastic idea where somebody wants to make some money.
I liked that idea too, I just wanted to bring that, thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, Council, we have this item ready to be.
Ms. Evans?
Yeah, item seven.
I move that we adopt the City Council Resolution 123360, authorizing the filing of a claim with the Intertional Transportation Commission for allocation of Transportation Development Act TDA funds for FY fiscal year of two thousand twelve to two thousand thirteen, and authorize staff to make the appropriate budget adjustments.
All right, motion and second, on favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? No. All right, motion passes. And I, I have a request for a break, so we'll take a short recess before moving on. All right, I'd like to call the meeting back to order, and we are just now starting on item eight A, which is Stephen filed a report on financial information for fiscal year two thousand twelve, twenty thirteen, as of September thirtieth. Do you want to, do you have a report on that? No? Please? Queer, that's some newer words to add.
Yes.
Um, what I've done for you, because doing the first quarter is actually very difficult, because a lot of our revenue doesn't come in, franchise fee revenue doesn't come in, TOT quarterly revenues don't come in until actually October. Our property tax revenue doesn't come in until December, we don't know until October the amount the county's projecting that we're going to receive, so I don't really have numbers on property tax. And a lot of the revenue that comes in in July is actually put in June, it's four of the month of June. So our auditors make us put revenue that comes in in June, expenditures that are for June, expenditures that are paid July, August, even into September, go back and get charged to June. So to give you a quarterly report is very difficult. So I've tried to go through and give you some information. The report we received on assessed value for the city shows that we had a decrease in assessed valuation again this year. There was Attachment Four, which is page sixty-nine, shows you the, the history of your assessed valuation, both for the redevelopment agency, which is now the successor agency. both for the redevelopment agency, which is now the successor agency, and the city. And you can see the overall secured is down, projected to be down 4.62%. Our unsecured is actually projected to be down almost 11%, 10.93. And so, what that means for us is that we'll probably receive less property tax than what I even budgeted, which is not good news.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Every year, my property tax increases. But how is it possible, I said, who is taking these increases? Does the county just take it?
I think a lot of people are getting reassessed, requesting a reassessment to go...
To go down, but why is it going up?
Well, it depends on when you bought your house. If you bought your house and it's under what I call the Prop 13 rule, if your assessed valuation is less than what the assessed value is for property in your area, then your assessed valuation can go up 2% a year. So if you bought your house in 1989, then your assessed value is probably way lower than what the current value of houses in your area are. So your property tax can go up 2%. Now, if you bought your house in 2005 and you paid $700,000 for it, and it's now worth $250,000...
Your owner.
Then you probably got reassessed year after year after year. And depending on where property values are now, some people are still requesting that their property be reevaluated because they feel housing values have gone down.
Thank you for the education.
So that's what's happening. That's why some people's...
Can you go ahead, Laurie?
Sure. That's why some people's property tax bills still go up. I know somebody who bought houses in the 70s in Orange County. His assessed valuation on these houses is $70,000, and that's with the 2% increase every year. The houses in Orange County are worth $300,000 to $500,000. So every year, their property tax goes up 2% because the value is nowhere near the value of the property.
Totally makes sense.
So, I gave you Attachment 4 so you could see the history of what's happened with property tax values in the city. As you can see, they've gone down since 2008, '09, they've gone down every year. And so, that's going to affect what's happening with our revenue. The sales tax revenue is less than, again, and I'll, at this point, I'll go to Attachment 2, which is page 65. What I tried to give you here was a history of what was the amended budget in 2011, what was the actual, and what was the percentage that was received. The same thing with 2012, which are unaudited numbers. And the reason I put that 9/28 date on there is because we're still in the process of making adjustments to the books. The auditors come in August, October 15th for a week. They may find that we have booked things into incorrect accounts, and they may do audit adjustments. So I put this 9/28 date so that everybody would know that this is what I have on my general ledger as of September 28. It is subject to change, it is subject to audit. So I've given you the 12, the amended budget, and what I have currently as year-end projected numbers. As you can see, I had budgeted $460,000 for secured property taxes. They actually came in at about $394,000, 86% less than what I had budgeted. You notice I lowered the property taxes for next year to 408, but we're not even going to receive the 408. We're going to probably receive less than the 393. What may make a difference, and these are the unpredictables, is that we really don't know how many people didn't pay their property tax. So there's a thing called redemption. If you didn't pay your property taxes last year, you can pay them this year. I don't have the history on how many people didn't pay, or who's going to pay, or who's going to redeem their, pay their property taxes. So from that standpoint, you could have money that's come in for redemption, and it's called secured redemption, and it will go under that line item. You also have what's called supplemental property taxes that come in. That means if I go out and I buy a new house, again, when I buy this house, the county has it valued at $100,000 because that's the Prop 13 value. I buy the house at $250,000, I have to pay what's called supplemental property tax, the difference between the $100,000 and the $250,000. And the county sends me a bill for that, and I have to pay it. Then the county then remits whatever our percentage is to us. We, again, do not know what that amount's going to be because it depends on how many houses are sold and whether or not they're buying them above or below market value. So those are some of the unknowns when you're talking about property taxes and trying to estimate what you're going to receive.
Question for closures, especially for closures for lack of payment on property taxes. When the new owner buys a foreclosure house, do they have to pay the old taxes?
Yes. It's my understanding they do, that that has to be redeemed, or the bank has to pay.
Well, the man will, when they rips out the house, they'll have to pay for that. Do you know the percentage called for closures in Fillmore?
No, I don't.
Thank you.
Okay, the next kind of major category is your sales tax. In '11, we received $724,000. Nice figure. So I budgeted, being conservative like I am, I had budgeted $670,000, thinking that was a nice conservative number. We actually came in at about $648,000. And on an offset to that, down below, you'll see tax sharing agreements. And right now, currently on our books, there's $928,000 booked as expenditures. We actually owe the state $1,335,000, but one of the people involved in the tax sharing agreements has paid us some money. And so this is kind of the net amount.
Was that recently?
Yeah, it was back in June, May?
May.
Yeah.
And what's the amount?
About $400,000. So what our auditors wanted me to do was book the sales tax so that you could see what was the sales tax. And then book the tax sharing agreements as what he's calling prior period adjustments so that we could differentiate between the two. So that's why you see those two separate line items. Now, what has happened with, I think, the reason, one of the reasons why our sales tax revenue is down is when we receive the negative amounts from the state, then we do not receive a percentage of the state pool or the county pool. So, and I did not go back and do the math to see how much we'd received in the prior year from the state pool and the county pool. But I know at least two quarters this year that we received nothing from the state pool or the county pool. So that affects the amount of money that's coming to the city.
Well, if you look at the 724 from last year and the 648...
That's 2012. That's the...
Yeah, right. Yeah. If it's not just the economy, which is probably some of the economy...
Some of it, yes.
But if it's also the issue that we're not receiving as much because we have a negative balance, you know, that's like $50,000 difference or something, approximately. All this stuff I do in my head, at least, it helps me think.
So, the whether or not we'll get $679,000 this year, you know, it's in between what we got last year and what we got the year before. So, sales tax is another one of those, you do your best estimate. But you're not even going to know what your first quarter sales tax is until December. So we're three months behind in even knowing what the state board allocates to us.
Now, the reason, the reason why we're not able to, is because we do not are allowed to receive any money because we owe the state $1.3 million, whatever it is.
No, we get a portion of the county pool when we actually receive allocation. It's when we go negative that we don't receive a portion. So if we actually receive money, then we receive a portion of the county and the state pool.
Do you remember, Dr. Head, how much the VOE is still holding from us? Because I remember last time, it was about $12 million?
No, I don't know how much they're holding from us. At this point, because of the sales tax advance, we still have about $1,041,000 in cash from the advance that came through in 2009. So at this point, we owe the state board about $1,335,000 for the tax sharing agreements, plus technically, we owed $1 million for the sales tax advance. So we're still subtracting our sales tax from that sales tax advance. So we don't receive any cash from them, even when we have sales tax. We don't receive any cash because we already have it.
That's part of the negative.
No. The negative comes from the tax sharing agreements. So, I don't like to say this because I'm usually a pretty conservative budgeter, but last year's taxes were 96% of what I had estimated. Licenses and permits were at 93%. Other charges were at 86%. And this includes your building permits, filming fees, engineering fees. Other revenue was at about 78%. And our transfers in were about 96%. And so when you're looking forward to next year... Yes, I try to be conservative in my projections for next year because that's just the way that I am. But I'm a little concerned because my projections seem to be a little optimistic. And so from a first quarter standpoint, as you can see, we've received 19% of our budgeted revenue and, I mean, we've received 10%, I'm sorry, of our budgeted revenue, and our expenditures are at about 19%. So, that's the general fund. And then Attachment 3, I put in the sewer, the water, the recreation fund, and the pool fund. And so that you can see the history of what's going on in those funds also.
Linda, in the 2012 year-end sewer revenues, is that just because the billings are so far behind that it's...
No, because we actually booked the receivables back to, again, we've had to book four, nine cycles of billing back to June. What I attribute this to, and I know everybody was really upset when this happened, but do you remember when we had the billings for water that were like six weeks and seven weeks worth of billing for water? Well, when those six and seven week billings occurred, you basically ended up losing a month of billing for sewer. So you actually, everybody, I know has complained about the sewer rates, but everybody actually got almost a one-month break on sewer billing because we did not go in, when we did that six-week billing, we did not go in and add two weeks worth of sewer service charges. When we did the seven-week billing, we didn't go in and add three weeks worth of sewer billing charges. So everybody actually got a break of the sewer bill this year, and that has affected our revenue in sewer.
But we also increased the rates, so four to go from five to four to four-five.
That's about the cycle, one... So, you know, we built four cycles, and that's about $400,000. So I know everybody's complained about the rates, but it actually affected our revenue. And I tried to explain that to people when they were complaining about their six weeks and their seven-week bills. I said, you don't realize that you're actually getting a break because we're not billing you for the sewer that's actually associated with that additional two-week period or three-week period.
Linda, that would be self-corrected, though, on, was it AC? If we go to the billing, the one-month billing cycle that's proposed under AC?
I don't know that it will be corrected. I mean, we're never going to recover. This money doesn't have a receipt.
Going forward, eliminate the six and seven-week long billing cycle.
That's what I'm hoping, yes. So, are there any other questions that you have on the financial review?
So what we fear in June, then we're going to have a shortfall of about $1.5 million. It's actually, it's actually a fact with $1.4 million. If I'm reading correctly, Attachment 2.
It's unaudited money, though.
Yeah, actually, yeah, and you have to remember that $928,000 of that is technically noncash. I mean, the tax sharing agreements, nobody took the cash away from us. So the thing you have to understand with what's happening going forward into '14 is that you have the one-time money. You've got the Prop 1A loan for $439,000, almost $440,000. That is not going to be here next year. You've got the loan from the rate stabilization fund of $271,000. You've got the prior period adjustment, as many were bringing in that was in a liability account that we're going to bring in and recognize it as revenue of $186,000. And you've got your general purpose reserve of $512,000, almost $513,000 that's coming in this year. And by the end of next year, based on what I have in my staff report regarding budget adjustments and based on an audit timing, that's going to be down to $138,000. So you're looking at one-time money of almost $1,400,000 that you're not going to have next year.
See, that's exactly what I was thinking. Unless the situation with the VOE gets somehow, and then we can get this cash.
If that is resolved. I've been hearing that ever since I have been here.
I understand, I understand.
So you can't pay bills with, we may have a settlement and we may get money.
No, I do understand that. I just, I just want to clarify that in my mind. So this $1.4 million is actually cash? Because we're not getting the cash on the remedy that we're supposed to be getting?
I think if you were to phrase it as, that's going to be our anticipated shortfall, and it's going to shift around a little bit based on the audit, I think you're accurate. Our budget shortfall is that amount of money. Right now, what we're looking at is unaudited numbers, so they're going to shift around.
Yeah, it'll go up and down, but the numbers, so far, the numbers are basically...
The truth is, we have a deficit. We're looking at a deficit no matter what.
Right. And then you have other tax sharing agreements that are in the appeal process or, and if determinations are made not in our favor, then those are going to affect what's reported next year. I did... I did put in next year's budget, two hundred and forty-nine thousand as an expenditure for tax sharing agreements based on one of the ones that we're paying. Every quarter, they take out an amount for two years. So that's actually recorded as part of the expenditures in next year's budget.
Do you have any suggestions? Will you analyze all the numbers? What suggestions would you give us? I'm talking about putting you to the spot, but, you know...
Financial director.
Obviously, when you analyze the numbers, it's like, oh my goodness, you know? And then, you know, just, I analyze it as well, and I, you know, my goodness. But any suggestions?
There's some ideas that are being thrown around, and so I'm not at liberty to discuss those at this point, but what we're trying to do is get Fillmore past these difficult times, and hopefully, the economy's going to turn around, and then we can move forward. And that has been our goal for the last two years. This is my, it's actually budget, and I know that that was the goal of the previous city manager, was to do everything we could to try to get us to a stable position.
Did you see the light at the end of the tunnel?
Yes, yes.
Instead of it is over now. The light is off.
And that's why we've had to make, you know, the cuts that we've had to make.
When do you think that those ideas that are floating around, when do you think we can discuss it? And let me explain to you why I'm asking you this question. Because I believe that some of these things we need to target right now, and we are ready in the middle of October. And in my mind, once we've crossed the fifteen, October's over, especially with the holidays. So is there any way that we can flow these things around and maybe discuss it sooner than later so we can start taking whatever measures we should be taking in order to try to reduce this deficit as much as possible?
That will be your city manager.
Yeah, sometime you're going to pass the buck.
I have to pass.
It's not your job. Thanks, Linda. All I can tell you is that I have made some contacts, laying some groundwork, and then once we did clarification, I'll be putting a presentation together.
Excellent.
But until then, I haven't spoken to certain pawns that are going to help us hopefully do this. So until I get those contacts and sit down and have meetings with them, I can't believe it.
And if we need to go back to talk to former Senator...
Well, someone that's better, you know, someone that's better than that discussed opening.
No, I understand, and I'm going to try and discuss it openly. What I'm trying to say is that I would like for us to jump in this sooner than later, and instead of when we come to the center while, you know, we knew this already, you know, I wouldn't want to wait until December for us to take some possible actions.
Right, so our resolve's going to involve other agencies, maybe county, why, on a state level, helping, you know, is what, you know, we've discussed before. And so it's hard to speak for other people, let's put it that way, until we, you know, see who's on board, how are you going to talk about it?
I'll try to be patient and wait for our active manager to...
Well, yeah, but the important thing is, you're a businessman, and you're used to, you know, and you have the bottom line, but so much of this is so dependent on other agencies. It's so, you know, the V O E is state, you know? I don't know if anybody's ever dealt with the IRS. This is the state IRS, and it's the Board of Equalization. So you deal with that with finesse, and it's going to take some political help.
And we have spoken with former Senator George Ritter, who's on the Board of Equalization now. He is very supportive, and he has spoken with his staff, and he's doing everything he can.
And we're speaking with some legislators, but there's a lot to...
I do want to say this. Linda, this is what I really wanted when I asked for this.
Is this your one-page report?
Yeah, I know. I mean, I have it returned to you, so I can't be pages, but yeah, a page report.
Sorry.
It had a lot of information, and I appreciate that. I know you put out a lot of hard work in this, and is not usual for us to ask for this. This is very, I'm opening, I understand the fact that the numbers may not be a hundred percent right, but we have a very good idea what we are just adding. And I really appreciate that and the little staff that you have for putting all this together. And thank you very much.
Yes, the little staff is me. The one thing that I would like to encourage for people that are watching, as everybody knows, we have a deficit in our recreation fund, we have a deficit in our pool fund, and I would like to encourage businesses in this town, people in this town, to make donations to keep the recreation programs going and the pool going because both of those funds run in a deficit. And part of my doing this, I look back, and traditionally, the general fund transferred about seventy to eighty thousand dollars a year to the recreation fund. That's, and we don't have that anymore. So we need this community to step up and make donations if they want to keep those programs because the general fund does not have the money to keep those programs going. The general purpose reserve doesn't have the money to keep those programs going. And I know when we proposed closing the restrooms as a cost-saving measure, and proposed closing the parks and cutting a couple of positions, that the community was in here, "We're going to support you, we're going to do whatever we need to do to keep those restrooms open." I haven't seen a dime to support keeping those restrooms open.
If I may, just quickly, there are some good news out of this report, and that is Page sixty-one. Building activity has increased permits and plan check amounts are likely to be greater than budgeted.
Yes.
As building takes place, that increases property values coming in the city from the sale of the homes once they're eventually sold. That's a positive indicator. Another positive indicator is both the sewer and the water fund are on track at this point.
Yes.
Meaning they're not falling behind our budget projections. So that's a, you know, a good indicator, I guess, that we're not falling behind in those areas. And like every other small city that subsidizes its recreation fund, Fillmore is no different. And, you know, until that comes back for the council, I imagine if the next full budget cycle will be addressing some of those harder questions again.
Yes, because I don't want to see those programs go away.
Another good news, and I'm trying, Steve, I was trying to find a good news.
Good, yeah.
You know, if you see the recreation fund, expenditure has gone down.
That's only down because we have two positions budgeted half-time. So, and that's on, you know, one of the things is that if you propose to keep those positions going for the rest of the year on a full-time basis, we have to come up with another eighty thousand dollars.
I understand, but, I mean, the water also, I mean, the pool is also expenditure down, and I know a lot of that is the chemicals that we're receiving and the lead that we have. But, I mean, there are so positive numbers in the whole report. Unfortunately, we're getting drawn to the bottom line with this one point four. But there are so positive numbers that it tells me that the actions that we have been taking within the last couple of years are taking little effects on this, so this moving into the right direction. But we're still having to deal with the other issues, but this is not so negative. And there are good points right here, like those two points that Steve completed. I agree, it's fantastic, I just, we're on track in those things, and we're not getting behind. So again, Linda, thank you very much, it's fantastic.
And you can thank Steve Stewart for working with our building community, working with the developers, and streamlining the processes so that they are coming in, they are pulling building permits. And I know he's in the process now, trying to work on getting the business park so that portions of it can be developed. And so, you know, there's some really positive things coming out of what Steve is doing with the development community.
Thank you, Linda. All right, this is our receiving file. I guess we don't need a motion for that, do we? All right, we're going to move on to I B. This is a consideration of 2011, 2012 year-end budget adjustments and adopt resolution one-two-dash-three-three-six-two, amending the fiscal year 2011. Hold up, who's back?
Yeah, this was a difficult meeting for me. Four major staff reports on one meeting. Your I B for you. Every year, I bring back proposed budget adjustments based on what I have found going through the budget, either additional revenue that we've found, additional expenditures. And again, we were doing some work on cleaning up some old capital projects funds. And so, and the budget adjustments this year, originally, when we did mid-year, we did not put in budgeted revenue for sales tax because we thought we were going to be in the negative. Because the auditors have now changed that, we need to now go in and put in a budget figure for sales tax revenue and a budget figure for the tax sharing agreements as an expenditure. So those are two of the proposed adjustments in here. We had also received five hundred and ninety-six dollars and twenty-six cents from the state of California towards a traffic signal at Central and One Twenty-Six. My opinion is that's sitting there in that capital fund, and I thought, you know what? Let's just transfer that to the general fund as a, as part of all the administrative costs. It's a minor amount, I just want to clean that fund out. And then there's an insurance reserve fund which has one thousand nine hundred and thirty dollars and some odd cents in it. And so I don't really know what that fund is for. Again, I said, "Let's just transfer that nineteen hundred dollars to the general fund and use it to help offset what we need to balance this year." So, and the utilities for the parks, the budget was seventy thousand, but we actually spent eighty thousand, eighty-three thousand, four hundred and thirty-three dollars. And so I'm proposing to take that from fund balance. It'll be offset a little bit by the nineteen thirty and the five ninety-six, but that'll just come from available balances. What the auditors do is they look at how much you've spent, and if you don't have a budget that is greater than your expenditures, then you get written up in your audit report saying that you didn't budget enough money. So this happens to be one of the departments that is short, and so the only thing I do is to bring it to council and have you increase the budget so that the city doesn't get written out.
Linda, could I ask, is that electricity or water, or is it all?
They put all utilities in one.
So we don't know where the increase came from?
Water, sewer, Edison, all of it. And I know that there is made an effort now to make sure that the lights, that Two Rivers Park were turned off, I guess people were leaving the lights on. And so they're making an effort to make sure that if lights aren't being used, that they get turned off so that we can, I'm hoping that will help decrease the amount that they spend next year. The Landscape and Lighting District and Strawberry District, when we did the review of those accounts, it was found that several years ago, they transferred two hundred and six thousand dollars from the Landscape and Lighting District to the Storm Drain Rear River Project, and it was supposed to actually come out of storm drain funds. So this just proposes to move the money back to the Landscape and Lighting Districts and then move it from the storm drain fund over to the capital project. So that's part of the adjustments, that's two hundred and six thousand. And the sewer DIF funds actually had more money come in and have some available balance and because of our projected deficit in revenue this year. And I looked to see how the DIFs were coming in this year to make sure I had enough to cover this year's budget, and we do. So I'm proposing to transfer a total of a hundred and thirty-five thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars from sewer DIF to the sewer fund. And then several years ago, they transferred, it gets complicated, but they transferred money from the sewer fund to the sewer wastewater treatment plant, from the sewer wastewater treatment plant fund, four sixty-three, to the miscellaneous capital projects fund, four sixty-four, to pay for some of the water recycling. There's about seven hundred and some thousand in that fund, and we need part of that to finish the backstops and the projects. So I said, "Let's transfer four hundred thousand of that money back to the sewer fund, and that will help cover part of that deficit we have this year in the sewer fund." So that's one of the proposed adjustments, is to transfer four hundred thousand from that miscellaneous capital project fund to the sewer fund. When we got into the A Street water project, there was actually retention that had been booked as a liability. Well, come to find out, that retention had actually been paid out of an expenditure account, so that actually made that available money that could be transferred to the water fund. So I'm proposing to transfer the additional amount to the water fund. The pumping tax expenditure, the reason for this major increase at this point is because I found that the two thousand and eleven expenditure, we actually ended up with five expenditures this year and only three last year. So I'm proposing then to budget the two hundred and fifty-three thousand, five fifty-nine because I can't go back and change last year's numbers, and we'll just end up with five expenditures this year, or three this year instead of the two we pay twice a year. The recreation fund had an operating deficit of about twenty-five thousand, two hundred and sixty-six dollars. The total deficit is seventy-four thousand, seven fifty. For the last couple of years, we have not transferred any money to the recreation fund to cover the operating deficit, so it just keeps growing. So I'm proposing to transfer that twenty-five, two sixty-six from the general purpose reserve to the recreation fund to cover the proposed deficit for this year alone. It will still leave a deficit of almost fifty thousand.
See, the only thing I will not do would be increase the deficit. Basically, that last year's deficit will stay the same?
Yes.
And we will not increase the deficit?
Correct. Same thing with the pool fund. There was seventy-six thousand, two hundred and seven dollars of operating deficit this year. Again, for the last two years, they have not transferred, well, actually, I can't see that they've transferred to the pool fund, and the deficit in there is two hundred and thirty-one thousand. And so I'm proposing again to cover that deficit with general purpose reserve money and which will still leave a deficit of a hundred and fifty-four thousand. So when you're thinking about, that's why I'm saying, people, please donate to the recreation and the pool fund because we need to, we need to at least cover, because this money has to come from someplace. So I'm proposing to at least cover the current year's operating deficit.
Let me ask a question. During the month of, well, the end of September, in the month of October, actually, no, sorry, we are in October. We had, we had a large amount of people going to the pool, and the numbers that I received were very, very encouraging. Have we seen a bump during those months on the revenue or was basically the same?
I didn't look at that to compare.
Don't worry, it's all right.
Let me. Can you go back to your reports, the 7A report? Attachment one shows that the pool expenditures are up over first quarter of last year. That first quarter of last year, the pool revenue was $17,380. This year, first quarter was $30,749.
What about revenues? I'm looking for it. Yeah, I'm looking into the revenues increased.
Right.
In the same year time.
Yeah, they did. They did.
What is that, what is the number, I'm sorry? 7A?
It's page 63.
It's 8.
And if you look under the pool fund, you'll see last year, the first quarter was $17,380. This year, it was $30,749. So the numbers are up.
Yeah, that's, that's good news.
Yes. We talked about the capital project funds. Fund 461 on page 74, there was a study done for a water softening plant. And originally, they put that in what was called construction in progress. Because if they had built the plant, it would have been part of the capital expenditures. Well, they have carried that in construction in progress since they did the study. And it's my understanding, we're not going to build the plant. And so, we need to move that from construction in progress back to an expenditure so that we can get it off the books. So that's the 461.
So you're saying the $175,000 paid 57 was spent?
Yes.
It's an ongoing bill that hasn't really been recorded. We're putting it somewhere.
No, it was, it was spent, but they put it, from an accounting standpoint, they put it in what's called construction in progress, which is a holding account until you complete your capital project. And then they.
But that's not going to be done.
That's not going to be done.
Finalizing this.
Yes.
Do you have an idea where the water softening plant was going to be, was going to be built?
It's going to be built at the current sewer plant location.
2006, all right, thanks.
Fund 466, which is the depot restoration project, it actually had negative cash of $87,299, but it had an offset of a receivable of $58,202. When we went back and did the research, we found that the money had actually come in, but it was never booked against the receivables. So this receivable really isn't a receivable. So we are going to have to do a prior period adjustment showing that the $58,202 is taken off the books, but we need to transfer the $87,299 to cover the negative cash in the depot restoration project. And I'm proposing to move that money from street project. We had had some bond funds go into the street project account, and we've had some grant money that came in. We spent the money, the grant money comes in later. So there's some money in the street projects fund, and I'm proposing to move that over to cover the deficit in the depot restoration. We talked about the storm drain rear and the water line. And then you skipped 464. 464, oh, that's the miscellaneous capital projects. That's the one where I talked about transferring the 400,000 to the sewer plant. There's some of these are in here twice because they're in, when I talk about the sewer plant, they're there. And then when I get to that fund, I talk about it again. So 464 is the 400,000 I'm proposing to move to the sewer fund.
Okay.
There's always, in accounting, there's always two sides. If you're moving it from one place to another place, you have to transfer it in and transfer it out. So, and then the other thing on the general purpose reserve, which is fund 506, is we thought we were going to get $52,500 from FEMA on a grant. And we had found out from FEMA that we are not going to get that money. And so, that was part of my projections for the end of the year, the balance for the general purpose reserve. It's not going to happen. There's no sense carrying it as a receivable. And so that's going to also decrease the general purpose reserve. So when all the transfers out of the general purpose reserve for the pool, for the recreation, not getting the $52,000, about $100,000 audit adjustment from the previous years that they had booked receivables that we're not going to get. Your projected balance at the end of '12 is going to be about 645 instead of the $899 that's in the budget. And at the end of next year, when we transfer out the 512, you're going to be at about $133,000. And then the insurance reserve, we talked about transferring that $1,900 to the general fund.
Any questions or comments on these transfers, adjustments? Is there anybody in the public who wishes to speak on this item?
Yeah, Mayor, I just want to make, make it public to know that Linda really put a lot, a lot of time in these four staff reports. It wasn't easy with the minimal, next to nothing staff that she has. So again, I want to acknowledge the hard work that she always does, especially with this, these four staff reports. We really appreciate it.
I know. This was a lot of work. We really appreciate it. And I hope you have a little bit of time to rest before the next.
Now, the audit started software that October 15th, and I lost my contract accountant last Friday, and it's his last day. So I'm now back to without an accountant.
Okay. Do you have a resolution for us?
I move that we adopt resolution 12-362, amending the fiscal year 2011 budget.
Check it.
I have a motion in a second. Let's make this a voice vote. Councilman Howey?
Aye.
Yes.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes, unanimously. Do you have another recommendation? Is there anyone?
I approve that we authorize the city manager, if necessary, to make the recommended budget adjustments.
Sir.
We have a motion in a second. On my favor, say aye?
Aye.
All right, motion passes. All right, thanks, everybody. Thanks, Linda. All right. Next, we're on item 8C. This is consideration to authorize the write-off of uncollectible inactive closed utility accounts and direct the acting city manager, or if necessary, to prepare ordinance, amendments, or another mechanism regarding programs relating to penalty and interest charges on late utility accounts, and to update the delinquent process and billing cycles with respect to all utility accounts.
Hello, mayor members of the council.
You are?
I'm Linda J., the finance director. In February, I ran some aging reports and found out that we had about 200, over $200,000 of accounts that were closed that had balances due. When we went through and actually started doing research on a lot of these accounts, we found that some of these accounts went back as far as 2002. So we have been working to try to collect as many of the accounts that were called closed accounts. These are people that are moved out of their properties. So we have sent letters and been on a pilgrimage to collect. We now have new policies in effect in the department where if you come in and sign up for water, we look up to see whether or not you had serviced at another address. And if you did, then we either make you do a payment plan or pay the balance that was due before we'll allow you to sign up for new service. So we've instituted some new policies and procedures in the department to try to deal with people that have left past due accounts. But in the meantime, we still have these accounts, some that go back to 2002, that we will never collect. So, I've given you a report that shows the total that I'm recommending to be written off, which at this point is $131,076.62. And of that amount, let's see, $56,300 is water, $73,000 is sewer, $1,200 is source reduction, and there's like $358 that is miscellaneous. Like you said, this does not include a lot of the accounts from '10, '11, and '12 that are closed because we're still actively trying to work on those. So I'm hoping that you'll receive another report before the end of this year, doing write-offs for additional accounts, because this should be done on a yearly basis. If you go to attachment, let's see, 2, and you look at the write-offs per fiscal year, you'll see that for some reason, 2007, 8, and 9 had write-offs of over $20,000, $30,000, $29,000 a year for those years. And, and the years before are fairly minor. I know that part of that probably has to do with the increase in the rates. And I think the other thing that we're going to see for '11 and '12, when we get to those write-off periods, is the increase in the length of time that we now have for billing process because of the increase in the length of time that the council allows people to pay. So I've given you a calendar that shows currently, the council changed their ordinance, and they allowed 31 days. So if you were billed October 4th, you have 31 days to pay that bill before it goes to Lincoln, which means it isn't due until November 5th. And then the late notice is then mailed, giving you another 15 days to pay. The late notice then becomes due the 21st. We hang the door hangers for shut-off on the 28th, and the town isn't shut-off until December 4th. So you can see from the time we bill to the time somebody's water gets shut-off is a humongous amount of time. And what this has done is it has increased, in 2010, when they did the accruals for the audit at year-end, there were four cycles. And there was, you know, 100% of cycle one, 100% of cycle two, and then a certain percentage of three and four. So you had about a month that you accrued back to the previous fiscal year. We're now at nine cycles. Because what has happened with this 31 days is what they found out, is they can't do the next billing until they've gone through this process. So this 31 days plus the 15 days plus the 48 hours for the shut-off, and depending on how holidays fall and when the billing is done, has drastically increased the length of time between when you are billed and when your meter is red. So for the bills that just went out recently, and people are really upset over this when they close their account, but when the bills went out, they were actually for, let's find my note. Sorry about this. Oh, the bills that just went out were for July 24th through August 29th. And they just went out in October. And those bills won't be due until basically December. So it has increased our receivable amount. It's increased when people come in to discontinue their water service. We're having to do manual adjustments to add sewer charges. Because if I come in today and shut off my water, you've got readings for two months that haven't even been billed yet, much less the sewer. So I know this is also another thing that's affecting our sewer collections. So one of the proposals is to, and it's not to be adopted tonight, but it's for discussion and I'm working with the attorney's office, is one of the proposals is to change to a 19-day allowance, which is about what your credit card, so 19 days, we send a mail notice giving you five days to pay where you shut off or shut off. And so that's one of the things that we're talking about and proposing to council is that we shorten the amount of time that people have to pay their bills. The other thing that we're looking at is changing, and instead of billing every, well, we have four cycles, so we bill for four weeks, and there's one week that there isn't billing, which also increases that time, is proposing and looking at, and I have not worked out all the mechanics of it, of going towards a month billing. Santa Paula bills 7,200 accounts. The county actually mails out all their bills. I do have a proposal from the county on what it would cost us to do that. And then, all the bills would be mailed out at one time. They would all be due at the same time. All the shut-offs would be done at the same time, which would save staff time. The other thing we're proposing is to stop paying the door hangers. Santa Paula stopped years ago giving the door hangers because what we hear in this city is, we had one lady that came in and actually was irate because she claimed that her door hanger wasn't hung. And how did she know that she had to pay her bill because she didn't have the door hanger? And we ended up in a big discussion, and I said, it's your responsibility to make sure that the bill is paid. Well, I never pay my bill before I did the door hanger. Well, you see when the door hanger is shut? She now owes another billing. So it's.
If I may make a comment on that as well. Staff that actually puts a door hanger is public works. And as you know, that staff has been cutting up quite, quite good as well. So as Linda stated before, you have to put the door hangers on before you do the shut-off. Well, it takes literally, you know, a lot of man-hours to get that done. So sometimes it takes two public works staff members to actually go out all day long to hang these door hangers in order for Linda to be able to collect, so.
And we average about 60 to 70 door hangers. That's how many people. And that's how far behind, because all we're asking for is to pay the amount we billed you for in October.
So we give 60 to 70 a shut-off?
A week.
A week?
Yeah, we can have as many as 60, not shut-offs, but door hangers, because these people wait until the door hanger is hung before they pay their bill.
So you can have a last door hanger.
Saying we're not going to have door hangers.
We can have a last door hanger saying we're not going to have door hangers, yeah. And what we're proposing to do is not mail the delinquent notice at the 15-day, but do the 19-days and then do the five, a notice that gives them five days to pay or their water will be shut off. If they don't pay within that length of time, then we would hang the door hanger that says, your water has been shut off.
I think that I had questioned this before, but is there any way, a very distracting city manager, can we explore the possibility of taking e-payments in the website? I mean, almost everybody is going to, I'm sorry, I don't know what. Everybody that's going into e-payment. I mean, almost everybody is going to, I don't know what, everybody that's going into e-payment, and so the person can either put their credit card, can either put their checking account, and then make a payment?
Yeah, I think if this was a perfect world, and I don't disagree with that, and I think it's a great idea, and I think we should for the convenience for everyone, but I think we've gotta keep in mind the demographics we have here, and a lot of our residents don't have that technology, a lot of residents don't even have credit cards, so...
Or checking accounts.
So, again, I don't disagree, I think it's a good, I'm surprised we haven't had it yet, and I'd be more happy to do some of the research on it, but again, it's not going to solve, I don't think the fact that we don't have that technology out there is gonna help them pay, it's they don't have the money to pay, therefore, they're waiting for the door hanger to wait for the last minute to be able to spend those funds to pay them. But it is a good idea, and I think it's something that we should take a look at.
I agree with the demographics, but I also disagree with some people, I mean, it's not that it's gonna, that it's all right, okay, collectibles are gonna be perfect for this or not, but you give them an opportunity, to apportion them, to turn around and say, "Well, you know, I helped, you know, this great government put more there, and then my water's not gonna be, or, you know, we can verify the funds basically immediately, and then, and then send someone to recreate the water."
And I agree, again, I agree, I think it's something that we can research, and I think it could be, could be done, but again, I don't think it's, I don't think it's a solvable problem for what we have in front of us.
And just so everybody knows, we do have automatic, what's called ACH, you can sign up, you can have your account charged each month automatically, so you don't have to worry about paying the bill. We also do accept credit cards over the phone, so you can call in, and we do it over the phone. Yes, it takes staff time to do that, but we do do it, and...
If you're getting money, you take the time.
We take the time. So they do have the capability of calling in and paying with a credit card over the phone. I know that's not as convenient as going online to pay, but going online is something that we started investigating, and because our current software does have that option, but somebody has to be assigned to do that, to do the research, find out what the cost is gonna be, and then how we implement. And I haven't had the time to do that.
Staff is accommodating, I, for one, have done it over the phone recently on one of my investment properties, and it worked great, so it does work. One thing I, and I know I'm preaching to inquire with my fellow council members and Madam Mayor, but, you know, this is hard times for everyone.
It is.
This is not an issue that majority of the individuals on these delinquent lists are not ones who just said, "I'm not gonna pay my bill today, or next month, or following month." It's because they lost their jobs, they lost their home, they cannot afford these sewer rates. So it's, there's some major economical implications with what we're dealing with. I just want that out there, it's not that we have individuals, majority of them are not ones who are trying to scam the system, they're tough times.
And I must say, there's a lot of people's names that are not on this list, because they did step up, and either made payment plans, or have paid pass-through amounts when we contacted them. And, you know, some of them, you know, we've been trying to search down forwarding addresses, and doing everything that we can to try to contact the tenants or the property owner to try and collect what we can, because again, this is money the city's not gonna get, this is $73,000 in sewer money that we are not going to receive. It's a big list, and it's a base list, yes. Your next one should be much shorter.
Just on page 95 for Public's Knowledge, the write-offs, looking at the dates 2007, 2008, 2009, 2010, and so on, the total due are quite high, and the implications are because of the sewer rates, obviously. But those, those four years are strong implicators as to what has transpired in our community. So I think that we need to be cognizant of that, and I know, majority of the people in our council, they understand that, but I think there's a lot of confusion as to how we got to where we're at with these sewer rates. And I think it needs to be pointed out time and time again, that there's, there's some that have a short frame of memory, so...
One thing I will tell you, and so that the public knows, when you look at the official statement for the bond issue, right now, the sewer rate should be over $100.
Just the sewer?
Just the sewer, yes. That was what was proposed in the official statement. And that's one of the reasons why both Moody's and Standard and Poor's downgraded our bonds this year, is because our sewer rates are not over $100, it's $101 or something like that. And I said, "You don't understand, this, this community can't afford $101." And they said, "Well, we're sorry, that's what was in your official statements, that's what we based your rating on, you're not complying with what you proposed, and so the bonds were downgraded." Now, our, our interest rate is a fixed rate, so it did not affect our interest rate. And as you know, we're trying to do different things to try to bring money into the sewer fund, so that we don't have to raise the sewer rates.
What is the interest rate in the sewer rate?
I can't tell you, I'll stop by, I know...
5%?
I think it's 4.1 something or other.
Okay.
Yeah, below, a little below 5.
I have a clarification question. So, when, when the project of the sewer was miniature in the bonds, when you're saying, what year was that, '07, '08, '09?
2007.
2007.
The proposal would've come through in probably 2006, because the bonds were sold in 2007, usually takes about a year. So, 2006 is kind of when the economy started going sideways. And so, the other thing that was in the official statement is that we were gonna be getting $500,000 a year in DIF fees to help pay for the debt service. And of course, that hasn't happened, because construction has gone...
So 2006, 2007, about that period of time, when the bonds were submitted, we are bringing you in those days, 2006 and 2007, that, that our sewer bill, not just water, our sewer bill, brick household, was gonna be over $100? Is that what you just said?
What was in the official statement?
And there was a Prop 218 that was sent out through the community, the community was aware of it, it was well-publicized, nobody liked the rates, that's for sure, but it was by no means a secret, and the reason, Gary, are you okay back there?
Yeah, I'm fine, Steve.
Because we can call the fire department if we're here.
I had a tickle in my throat, Steve.
I'm sure you did.
The Prop 218 ballot had a projection, I think, of like seven, seven or eight years out, and it maxed out.
It was a staircase, and that was one of the reasons, there was the Sewer Rate Stabilization Fund that was put in there to minimize those rates and help toward that, there's a reason that the community put $19 million of RDA money into the sewer plant, you know, all those things. But, you know, while we have the authorization to go higher, nobody wants to go higher in the rate. But quite honestly, it is a cold fact that we're downgraded, because the council didn't stick to the pro forma, because we all feel the pain of those rates. But what we're talking about tonight is writing off this uncollectible debt.
But I do wanna clarify, Steve, when you said that the reasons our bonds were downgraded, there were like four reasons, and one reason was that we weren't at the level that the Prop 218 bond documents stated, the other one was that we've lost a 9.6% of our customer base, and the other was our delinquency rates, and then the other was the DIF fees, so... So hopefully doing these write-offs will change our delinquency rate.
We did get a $1 million DIF payment from our cell.
Yes, and we used part of that in 2012, '13 to help offset 4% of the sewer rate increase.
So the rates wouldn't have to increase.
So the rates would not have to be increased.
As much.
As much, yes, yes. So we're, we're making an effort to keep the rates as low as we can, and still have money to be able to pay for debt service and operating costs. And at this point, Steve is in negotiations with American Water, to see if there's a way that we can decrease the operating costs for the plant. And so if that happens, then I would hope that we would not have to end with the increase in the DIF fees, if we've got development going on. If you've got the DIF fees coming in, if we've got lower operating costs, then I'm hoping that sewer rates won't have to decrease, uh, increase.
One question I have about this uncollected debt, these, I wanna verify, these are all closed accounts?
Closed accounts, yes.
None of them are active?
None of them are active.
And the city has made multiple attempts to try and cluck on these debts?
Uh huh, we've sent out like three letters to people, and the last letter said, "If you don't pay this account, then you're gonna be on a list that goes to the city council on October." So, and it doesn't mean that if anybody, if somebody came in and we knew these people owed us money, that we couldn't collect it, just because we write it off doesn't mean that we can't collect it if, so, you know, somebody came in and they said, "Oh, I remember, this person was on the write-off list," and they can still collect, but we just need to get it off the books for the auditors' sake, and so that we can be more current. We're still probably a year behind in write-offs, but since I just kind of started it this year, I wanted to get this off the books, and then we'll work on what we can for the next year, channel the problems and... I do have a couple speaker cards.
I don't have any questions, I'm, when we're ready to discuss, we'll do it.
Okay, thank you, Linda. Mr. Alex, one more.
Good evening, again. I had five points to make on this. Possibly, maybe we should look at new accounts, security deposit, which would ensure that if someone becomes delinquent, that, that deposit can cover the delinquency.
We can let Linda address that, we do have a security deposit.
In my personal experience, what I have found to be nerve-wracking is that my water, water and sewer bills due almost a different day every month, and it just keeps kind of moving forward. At one point, it was due like around the 2nd of the month, now I wanna think it's due around the 23rd of the month. And not everyone is on a fixed pay scale, where they get a check every week, or, you know, a monthly salary for exactly the same amount every month. Quite a few people are self-employed, and in this downturn economy, I mean, you could lose one client, and that'll throw your budget way off. So I think I'm for going towards the same day of the month due date, because at least you know when it's due, if it keeps changing, it's harder to budget. I also was gonna state that I thought that this 562 delinquent accounts might be clearer to read if it was sorted by date in an alphabet, than I realized that you have it sorted by year on a separate page, just with the totals. As far as, you know, a lot of people, you know, converting to an ACH payment system, unless the, the due date is the same day every month, that can cause problems for some people. Because then it's like, you know, they don't know what day it's gonna be taken out of their account, or if it's always the same day, then it's easier to work with. But I, I do agree with Rego, as far as, just probably half the people are paying by money order or cash, because, you know, a lot of people don't have checking accounts anymore. And, but, I'm all for getting this in, in order, because I think it's just gone on way too long, that we have all these monies going back to '02. But my last question is, we're writing this off to take it off the books, I guess to protect our credit rating, et cetera, et cetera, but have we thought about selling the accounts receivables, so that at least we might see some return on the delinquent accounts?
Thank you. Thank you.
There, we did discuss a more aggressive collection approach. Is that something the council would possibly consider, to outsource the collections of this fund, perhaps on a contingency basis, so we're not paying for the work, but give them a percentage of the collection received?
Yes, I think we need to explore some of those options, I do have one that is with your card, though.
Okay.
Yeah, later. Couple of legal statements, what's the statute of limitation on, is this considered theft or not paying your water bill?
No, it wouldn't, I mean, it, it wouldn't be considered theft, I mean, it's, it's a debt, it's owed, of course, debt collection agencies and other agencies could be sawed.
The statute of limitation, it doesn't run out of for five years, or?
I would have to look into that, I mean, I don't know that we could collect all the way back to 2002, it's probably not that long.
Okay. That's, that's a big factor, of course, somebody knows that they're not gonna have to pay anyway, even a collection agency is, you know, gonna get hung up on all the time. But I, I also was approached by a lady here in Fillmore today, has been, her and her husband have lived here for, for her whole life, they have two children, and she asked me to, she's kind of shy about getting in front of you guys, I noticed an economic payment of almost $635.03. I'm concerned about the deadbeats, we should go after these deadbeats, these people that promote expensive sewer plants and don't pay their bills. And there's, I just kind of went through it with my friend, and there's a whole lot of deadbeats that could pay these, we know them, they could pay their bills. Most of them still live in Fillmore. What they do is they change their name, they move their first name to their middle name, and they have a friend come in and sign up for water, and they just go on living. I can take you tomorrow and probably show you 50 of them. So I, I respect that you have probably tried to collect, but there's a lot of deadbeats that scam the system. And I am the first one to tell you that I, these people, most of these people, 80% of these people are hurt, and they can't pay these bills, there's no question about it. There's no question about it. But when we bought our bonds, we were all sitting right here and the current city manager, which was Tom Ristau and Mr. Conaway, who's the mayor, we had a, we had an economic demographic the same as Ojai, Port Juaniemi, and Moore Park. So we could afford these things. We got scammed too by that council and Roy Payne. But I think we should go after the deadbeats, make a concerted effort. I realize, as Glenda said, we can write it off and still go after some people. I think that's a, that's a good idea if you wish to go that way or give us, I would volunteer my time and so will several other people to, to talk to these people, these deadbeats, if you wanted to go that way. Give us a month. Because this, this is sickening, the people's names you read in here. Old families driving brand-new big trucks with lifts and $2,000 set of tires. I have nothing more.
All right, thank you. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak on this before we, please come up?
Are these bills billed once a year at least? Do you notify these people that they have to pay it once a year? Have they been receiving the bills?
As Glenda stated, they've been sending out bills every month.
Every month, they still, so they are still, because I know that if you don't give someone a bill for over a year, you may lose the legal right to go after them. Am I, am I close to asking, I'm asking legal counsel? I know when you're studying business, in business, you were required to send a bill once a year at a minimum, once a year, to be able to retain that legal claim on the money owed. So that's why I'm asking if the bills have been sent out at least once a year.
Just a question. I think we heard from staff already that they've been making diligent attempts to bill on a regular basis. Am I correct in that, Glenda?
If the, if we had an address for the people, bills were sent out. But a lot of them come back with no addresses and so an effort has to be made then to try to find an address for these people and then remail bills. I could not say that all of these accounts have received bills at least once a year since 2002.
Okay. All right. All right, anybody else? All right, let's have a discussion.
I'd like to start off. I am not for the recommendation, number one, to authorize write-off or uncollectible inactive bills. I was reading this list and I know several people here that live in Fillmore and do business in Fillmore and I'm just not willing to, to say they should get a free pass. It's just too much money, $130,000. So I'm not going to recommend that. I'll go on the record again, I did not agree with this work plan. I thought it was overbuilt and overpriced and we are not Ojai, we are not Port Juaniemi. We're, you know, we're the poorest city in the town. And therefore, it really, I think it's a correct evaluation when we're downgraded in our box, frankly. Because it's a, it's a correct indication of where Fillmore really is. And so it doesn't concern me as a leader that we're, our credit ratings reduced because at this point, I don't want to see a state getting more credit out. Okay? But for the, for the public, what I'm trying, what I'm trying to say is, I do see that some people could not afford it. I understand some people lost their homes. And if there is some way that we can distinguish who's doing business in town and not paying, and who has lost their home, is there some way to distinguish that? We need to try and make an effort because this is just $130,000. When you see the type of deficit we're having, it's just too much. So I will not support, uh, one. I will support, uh, to direct the acting city manager to amend the mechanism regarding the program. That we do need to bill more efficiently. And so I certainly agree with that. I think we need to look into maybe the county doing it, you know, and I think that's a great idea. And it just needs to be more efficient for the sake of a small staff that we have. And so that, those are my, my two comments and the reasons I give for them.
All right, thanks. Glenda, I could have a question for you. If we take these accounts and say we found, we sold them to a collection agency or hired a collection agency or a temporary staff person to track these down, what does that do to our audit? Is that a problem if we, if we say that we're going to try another attempt at collections?
It's my understanding that the previous interim did some work on trying to get a collection agency in here. And I know when I was at Santa Paula, we did the same thing. And basically what they tell you is that if you can't give us the name of the person within 30 days, they have a hard time collecting also. And so I know there's no way they're going to go back and try to collect from anybody back to, to even 2009. I don't even know if they'd go back to 2010 to try to collect from people. Now, we can make an effort and, you know, it's one of the reasons why the list goes to the city council is, you know, sometimes council knows things that I, well, I don't because I don't necessarily know the people in Fillmore. But if they know where people are located and that we could go after those people, then, you know, we don't have a problem doing that. And, but collection agencies, it's my understanding, a lot of them now want to do it based on either a flat rate, so much per account that you send in for collection, whether they collect or not. And the ones that do it on contingency usually charge about 50% and staff still has to send them all the information. And if there is no address, if we can't give them the address of somebody, I would assume it depends on the collection agency, you know, on how efficient they are. And I know that things may have changed with the internet and finding people now.
Yeah, they do, as you can see.
They have some more than, than we have available to us with unlimited staff.
And do you know, if collection agencies advise, advise the entire portfolio or whatever, do they pay you upfront, say 50% if that's their commission?
I don't know. I have not looked into collection agencies since 2000, so I'm not familiar with what collection agencies are doing at this point.
Okay. And if there's some way that we do happen to find a collection agency that wants to buy this portfolio of delinquent accounts, would it be written off at that point as far as audits concerned? Or if we hang on to it and attempt our own collection, how does that affect auditors?
Well, what we're proposing, these write-offs are actually going to end up in year 12, 13 this full year. They're not going to go back and be part of the 11, 12. Except for the point that we booked the expenditures, we have it sitting in a liability account. This is the potential for bad debt collection. There's always an account that allows for bad debt collection because there's always bad debt. I don't care what business that you're in, there's going to be some accounts that aren't collectible. But we would have to contact different collection agencies. And I know at one time when I was at Santa Paula, we had a collection agency, we sent things off. I talked to the current interim finance director and said, they said they're currently not using a collection agency. So I don't know what happened between 2000 and 2012. I mean, that's, you know, 2000, I left in 2002, 10 years, I don't know what happened, but they're no longer using the collection.
What was their level of delinquencies?
I don't, I don't remember. It's quite 10 years.
All right, thank you. Any other comments or questions?
Yeah, I do. I just want to point out that when we're looking at these past due debts, it's really easy to say, "Well, it's Conaway's fault because, you know, he built a sewer plant, it was on board and he was the one that did everything." And that might weigh with some people that have limited reason, but not the general public. But here's the thing I want to point out. The past due debt in 2005, prior to the sewer plant, was actually higher than the write-offs that being proposed in, on page 95 for 2011. So 2005 is $7,800 and $7,857 and change. 2011 is $6,943. 2004 was actually higher than 2010. So I just want to point some, some facts out.
Well...
If you need a calculator, I'll loan mine.
Well, what page are you looking at?
Page 95. It's attached with two. If you add up what was due in 2004 for water, $4,233.25, and add up the sewer for $2,634, add that up and compare it to 2010 where we had sewer, water at $1,666 and sewer at $3,710. So, you know, if we're going to look at this, let's look at it, let's stay on focus.
I think she said that they didn't have all the information, the data from 2002 to 2011.
Well, this is, I'm just looking at the information that was provided in our packet. So these are the numbers that were provided to us.
All right.
Just for comparison purposes.
Well, I just think it's very interesting, Councilman Conaway brings up these dates and stuff because how did we get, how did we get the credit rating? And we got to get the bonds with that kind of a mess we had back in those days. Could you answer that, please?
All right. You have to direct your questions to the chair.
No, I won't answer it.
Because you can.
All right. Did you have anything else to say, Steve?
Actually, no. Other than I do support looking at the uniform billing. I think that makes sense. It's going to reduce work with city staff and probably help our residents quite a bit so they don't get those 70-long billing cycles. I would like to look at sending this, or looking at a collection agency to go after these. Glenda, just, so I understand, we can write this off and still go after the collection and then book the money if any pays received, correct?
Correct.
Okay. That's all I need to know. Thank you. I'd support use of the agency to go after the uncollected amount based on paying them on the percentage of what's collected rather than paying for time.
Per time.
Yeah.
Yes. Okay. Any other comments? I will say I am in support of, and I'm not ready to quite write it, write it off without looking into a collection agency, some type, some type of collections. I am in support of staff's efforts to, to look at ordinances at certain billing times and reorganize all the billing programs. And Stephen, in response to your comment that, you know, it's all your fault, I'm not going to say that, but I will say that I'm pretty familiar with, with the whole process that we went through. And if you recall, we suggested some other alternatives that would have been lower cost. We suggested the SRF and those things were...
You know, Gilli, all these things have been asked and answered a million times by professionals. We did look at the state revolving loan fund. We looked at a 20-year financing mechanism, we used a 40-year financing mechanism. You suggested that we could save money by using reactive concrete, so our new plant would degrade quicker than non-reactive concrete. You suggested that we could use uretrite and micromedia, which were unproven, untried technologies that would waste millions of dollars. You've suggested a lot of things. And while I appreciate all the input that came before the council, the entire council over numerous years and all the input that we received from professionals, the bottom line was, we went out to an RFP, we selected the lowest-cost bidder, we have a 20-year guarantee on the plant, and nobody likes the rates. We get it, we agree on that. But the fact is, when we have people that have past due accounts that are paying bills and we're not charging to administer late notices or subsidizing those people, you know, that's just poor management on our part. We should do better about collecting on that information, that money. So...
And that's what we're going to do. We're going to do the collections. And the fact is that the community can't afford these rates. And I will disagree with you that I think we could have done better. We could have gone with PERC, we could have done the SRF and, you know, you can throw out that stupid reactive concrete comment, that's ridiculous.
I agree, it wasn't the best comment to make.
It was just a suggestion. But you want to keep belaboring it, but when you, I want to look at the, at the big picture. The big picture is the SRF bonds should have been used rather than municipal bonds that would have saved us millions in interest costs. Anyway, we have somebody that wants to speak over.
Yeah, I would just like to maybe bring some clarification here. And I'm not sure if I'm going to make a statement or ask a question or maybe both, but is it my understanding that the finance director, Glenda J., is, is asking for us to write off this amount so that we can protect our credit rating so that our sewer rates won't go even higher? Because that's what I was kind of hearing.
No, that wasn't my suggestion. I...
Well, you said we must get these off the account.
If we're not going to collect them, we need to get them off our books so that when we run an aging report, we can see what is really something that might be able to be collected. There's no way we're going to collect things back from 2002, probably not even collect things through 2009. I mean, we're making an effort, but the odds that we're not going to, we probably won't be able to collect those. So we need to get them off the books, out of the system so that we can show the auditors a realistic aging report. Because right now, when you run that aging report, it shows, you know, $200,000 is over 120 days overdue. And if we don't write these accounts off, especially the things that are the old accounts, then we continually give a false sense of how much our receivables are. Because this shows up every month that our receivables are $7 million when in reality they're only...
One day it's coming.
If I may add a little bit, the way that I see it is mostly an accounting procedure more than a really interest or rating. Most companies, most businesses, when they run out, you know, credits like this, you know, accounts receivable so high, they do the process of writing them off. Obviously, for business, for profit...
Private business.
Yeah, for profit business, it's actually a benefit because you actually, if you have revenues, I mean, if you have profit, reduce your profit and do those kind of things. For others in here, it's mostly accounting procedure to clean out a little bit of accounting and prevent for that, what Glenda said, is unrealistic accounts receivable to continue increasing where there is not really a possibility of collection. There's a lady over there that is deceased. So it's mostly accounting procedure. I don't, I don't gather any way that it is because of, of the break. I don't, I don't gather in any way that it is because of, of the rating. At least my understanding.
Okay. Well, my vote would be to write them off, send them off to a collection agency or let somebody else collect because obviously we don't have the staff to do it. We need to concentrate our staff on collecting the current process. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, Councilman.
I'd like to make a motion, number recommendation number two. I rec, uh, I would motion that we direct the acting city manager on his destiny to prepare arguments, amendments, or other mechanisms regarding programs relating to the penalty and interest charges on late utility accounts and to update the dilutive process and the link cycles with respect to all utility accounts.
All right, we have a motion and a second on favor. Say aye.
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 opposed? Okay. Motion passes.
Mayor, I'd like to actually make the motion that we write off the uncollected, inactive, or closed accounts and look at retaining a collection agency for those same accounts based on a, uh, E-schedule.
Okay. I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
A motion, a second on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. opposed?
No.
Motion passes three, two. And our next item is 8D. This is appointment of two member ad hoc committees in the city council for American Water negotiations.
And this person.
Glenda J.
Mayor, in the city council, recently you directed staff to work with American Water to look at our current operations contract. I've had initial meetings with them. They are very interested in opening up those discussions. They would like to bring ideas forward on how they can, uh, help the city reduce our operating costs. I am requesting the mayor appoint two members of the city council to form an ad hoc committee to work with staff during these initial stages of discussion.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, I think when we discuss this, we want staff to work with staff. And then after some, I want to say formal ideas, if some ideas were generated, those should come back to the council. That was my memory of this item.
Well, I think that's been done. And now you want me to sit down with the subcommittee?
If I could interrupt, it's actually my recommendation that we have this subcommittee, and that's because there's not a closed session exception that would allow the full council to discuss options in closed sessions. So the way to do it not publicly would be to have a subcommittee work on the negotiation.
Okay, thank you.
I would think one of the subcommittee members should be, if he were not up for reelection, he's not even going to be here for two years, so, and, uh, be the two gentlemen to manage one of them.
I have no qualms of being on this committee in common. I'm definitely in support of it. Should have been done months ago, but yes, I'll be glad to be a part of this committee.
My other suggestion would be, I think the mayor knows more about the sewer plant than any of us, so I'm suggesting, are you?
Yeah. I would, I would like to see that posted in the front as well. She's got some intense knowledge of this, so I'd be glad to know that.
All right, so we have two volunteers or a sub, ad hoc subcommittee?
Well, I'll, I'll raise my hand to be a volunteer, even though I'm not running for reelection, but I am on the council until January 8th. And, uh, since I was in this longer than anybody else and have a hard understanding of that, I would like to spend my, my time just for it. Of course, it's up to the mayor.
Well, I, I definitely want to be involved. I, I feel like I'm comfortable with the contract and aware of the, um, the flow rates, the contract provisions, so, um, so I would like to appoint myself to Councilman Sykes. Do I need a vote or is that just mine?
Can I make a comment?
Please, hold up.
Thanks, Ms.
Alex Mulcoy, 569 Third Street. First, there was a motion or a suggestion that, uh, no one up for reelection be appointed to the ad hoc committee.
No, I didn't say that. What I said was, I wanted to assure that at least one of the members who wasn't up for election would be on it. Okay? So I did not say the statement, the statement you said. I did not say no one up for reelection. I said, I just wanted to make, be assured that at least one of the members that, that's why you have rotating elections, would, would be on.
So we have one that, that may or may not be here, which would be me, and then one that will be here.
Well, and then if you go away, then you have a party of one.
And then somebody else can, a new person can be appointed by the next mayor.
So, I don't know. It's my suggestion that actually you appoint yourself and Mr. Conway, since you both have opposing views on the sewer plant. And I think that would be the best way to bring the most light to this subject. And that's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Michael, um, the problem of appointing, appointing two individuals that potentially can be leaving the council means that there is no, there is no continuity on that idea of a committee for the future. So, uh, since Mr. Sykes is not up to reelection, at least we know that whatever the, the committee did between now and January will be continuing for the future. Does that make sense?
Well, based on that thought, then it should be you and Brian, because you're both going to be here for two more years.
I personally have no interest in that. I have interest in that. I have no interest in becoming a member of the, uh, of the committee for many different reasons.
Okay. It's too political.
Thank you for your comments.
No, it's not for you.
Oh, boy.
All right. So, Brian and I are the subcommittees. Our next item is item 8E. This is consideration of sample codes of conduct and ethics and provide direction to staff. Tiffany first.
At the last council meeting, we talked about reviewing additional sample codes of conduct and ethics for the council to further deliberate whether or not it wanted to adopt its own code of conduct or ethics. So I've given you two samples that my office helped or gone recently. And at this time, I'd like you to point out which of the sections you'd like to see in code or whether this is not something you're continuing to have interest in following up on. Thank you.
All right, any discussion on these sample codes? I still can think that our old one was easier to absorb. That can be the direction that we-
Mayor? You know, I actually agree with this. I mean, these are laid out, um, City of Bellflower Code of Conduct and then Code of Ethics from, was it Leno or somewhere else? I'd be fine resurrecting the old ones that we had and moving forward, or if we want to just part watch this, white out Bellflower and insert Fillmore, you know? Something is better than nothing.
Well, we had a lot of discussion at the last meeting about this and, and-
Of course.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Um, for Tiffany, obviously this Bellflower Code of Ethics was created after all the mess in the city or that was-
City of Bell. Yeah, different, different city.
Yeah. I, I personally, I read both, both of them. I, um, I'm very familiar with Code of Ethics, um, mostly for healthcare, I'm very familiar with Code of Ethics. I, I really liked this City of Bellflower. I think the language is, is very nice. It's, it's, it's not just a few pages. Um, I, I, I think there's something that we all can live with. Um, I disagree with, with the previous one that the city have. I think that it was needed more weed and less motivational. It's this one, City of Bell, in my point of view has, but I would be doing it now.
Well, it doesn't really address, this one doesn't really address the issues that we were having. So that's my concern with this one.
Can, can you explain that coming, I mean, for example, regarding Brown Act and the things like that?
No, it's more, um, it's more council behavior towards other council members, towards staff, um, towards the public. And I think what, what prompted it was a couple of months ago when Councilman Conway said he was going to speak as a citizen and came down and made accusations against me that were unfounded, untrue. And, you know, that kind of, that's the kind of behavior that as a council we should be engaging in. So that's, that's a concern. And I don't see anything like that here.
Well, can we perhaps use, and just an idea, perhaps use this Code of Ethics, the three pages, and then direct our attorney to add some, uh, meaning-
Code of Con, Code of Conduct, Epidios and that.
Well, Code of Conduct in general, we relate to, to, to the business of the city. This is not just what we're over here.
Right.
And I can go in front of the city of that and do the same thing as a representative of the city. So it's while we're doing business as a city, as a city council, that will apply regardless of where it's standing on.
That's true. I have a question.
Having a Code of Conduct, having an ethical Code of Conduct does not make people ethical. I haven't changed my opinion. I think, uh, people have been very unethical, um, in Congress, the US Congress, and they have a legal code. You know, people, uh, what makes people ethical is, uh, the way their mother and father raised them, I suppose, or decisions they made for themselves. So I'm, I'm not for having a Code of Conduct. Uh, I think we have a general Code of Conduct as a lead of cities gives you a, an idea of Code of Conduct. We have Rosenberg's Rules of Conduct, of conducting a meeting. And as I mentioned before, it talks about courtesy, it talks about how to speak with one another. I don't see any great need for it because we had, we had one before and it was misused, I think, quite. And, um, so suddenly when we get a Code of Conduct, can we use it to say you're having bad behavior? Because you're, you're doing opposite of what this Code of Conduct says, was in reality, we can just say, you're having bad behavior, because they are. If people are having bad behavior, we recognize it as bad behavior. You know, and, and so anytime there's accusations flying and all that, uh, that's, that's, it's just, it's just not needed, I think.
So your recommendation is number two. Councilman Sykes, any comment?
As I stated at the previous meeting, putting your pen to the paper is fine, but following through the Code of Ethics is another situation. So, Code of Ethics is a compass for all elected officials to take seriously, in my opinion. Um, and I have no qualms of signing it. However, you know, actions speak louder than a pen and paper. So I will support, um, this recommendation, um, from the city attorney. I do think there's, um, some additions that are warranted, such as on page-
You said, what, recommendation one or recommendation two?
Number one. Number one. And one of my reasonings was on page 108, um, number three, substance abuse policy. We've never had our Code of Ethics, and I think that's an important, important element to it as well. So I'm glad to see that in there. Uh, my question for the city attorney is, can we make additions to, okay, for other councilors that may have some concerns with what's-
Right, you can take a hybrid of anything you want. You can add other issues completely if you want to have it more of a, a meeting policy manual, for example. You can make it whatever you like.
Thank you for the clarification.
Mayor?
Yes.
We, we don't have to choose one or two. We can adopt the Code of Conduct for the members and we can also adopt the Code of Ethics also. And, and for the city attorney, if we do adopt these, these will be passed by ordinance, correct?
Not necessarily.
Wouldn't they become, wouldn't they be law of the city of Fillmore?
Right, but usually policies are not the resolution.
Okay. But if they are considered law of the city?
Resolutions are law. I mean, you could do it by ordinance as you prefer.
Okay, but if we did it as a resolutions, it's-
The law of the city.
It's the law of the city. And not signing that would be breaking the law?
Well, I mean, it depends on how you have, if there was a requirement that all officers of the city signed it, and there could be an issue of someone being sworn in until they signed it, like taking it out.
Right, okay. Well, I, I would support both. I, I see no reason to differentiate between Code of Conduct and the Code of Ethics. They cover different things. The Code of Conduct talks about comprehensive interest policy regarding housing in property ownership. It talks about Brown Act, it talks about substance abuse, it talks about anti-harassment, anti-nepotism, mandatory ethics trainings, which is state law. Code of Ethics talks about inheriting the principles and the actions of its members in kind of a higher law, if you will. And for the record, Rosenberg's Rules of Order just talks about how to conduct a meeting and talk about, uh, it just has to facilitate a meeting, not ethics or conduct. But I support both of these. I think we should move forward with both of them.
Excellent. There's an element of courtesy and space.
I would like to see some, some language added to this within regards of maybe perhaps direct contact behaviors of what you are representing in the city. And also, I, I also would like to see some consequences if the violation of this will follow into this. So we don't understand, I mean, we have a rule, we need to understand where, if I refuse to follow it, what the consequences are refusing to follow this that we decide to sign, it will be, uh, it will be for those people. Also, in order to have a Code of Conduct, we must have every, and I think the law is- Also, in order to have a Code of Conduct, we must have every, and I think the law needs to be included in the document. It needs to be something that we all have to, what, not as I agree, but at least to sign. This is where you agree to conduct yourself when you're representing the city. Now, whilst you're not representing the city and you are your own citizen, when you're doing it, when you're doing it from your house, it's a completely different story than when you do when you actually represent the city. But I would like to see some language included in there, also where the consequences are.
Okay. So is anybody prepared to make a motion or give us some direction?
I personally, I have not ready to present a motion until, until I would like to see a document that includes the language that I should discuss.
Well, that's recommendation number one.
Well, okay.
If you can give me consensus on a different direction?
Yeah.
You know, like, Mr. Sykes mentioned substance abuse to be addressed. There's general consensus to do that. You know, let me know, you know, everyone had different thoughts, if we could just get consensus on the different ideas, then I can.
Well, I'm ready to come back, number two. And I think that's what Jamie said. So Jamie and I are under the noise.
I think for, I think for sake of time, Madam Mayor, maybe we, you want to do those consensus now, or can we, can we carry this on to the 23rd and then gives us time to get input, email input from the council?
Well, we can't get email input, that would be a Brown Act problem. But if they, I just need to know, you know, is it just one person who wants, for example, the substance abuse issue to be addressed, or do a majority, that way we can add that language and, you know, it'll allow us to move forward if I know that the different comments are something that more, you know, that a majority are interested in.
So the three there are in support of that substance abuse and one, that's one.
It's already laid out and the Code of Conduct is there.
Okay. So that's, you want to just take what's in there and maybe add something else?
So when, when you guys are talking about one and two, you're talking about Bellflower and Linwood, not?
No.
Not the boys' recommendation?
No. The mayor and I are supporting number two of your recommendations, that there be no, it's not necessary.
Okay.
That's what we're saying.
Okay.
And so now you got three people who are interested in Code of Conduct, so that's, that's a clarification.
Part of the, part of the question that, I want to trick you into a question, but on the things that basically Brian and I were asking about the Code of Conduct, she wants to know there's consensus for the things that you said.
Eduardo, if I may, I think what you're alluding to is adding some language to differentiate between a council member, commissioner, board member, all of above, when they're conducting official business on behalf of the city versus the clear line from a private citizen communication. You want to have that clear line of separation between a private citizen speaking and when a council member is speaking officially on behalf of the city. Is that what you're referring to?
Yeah, absolutely. Because part of the thing is that as individuals, I believe that we have a right to behave wherever we want to, as long as legal. But as a council, there's no expectation of the way that we should behave, so yes.
So you mean the same person that, on their own time versus?
Correct.
Wearing the council hat?
And in the own time, in the way that I see it, not even mention the own time, is when you are representing the city, boom, 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 this is the way that we expect you to behave. Whether you are in the city council or just representing the city on any way. I mean, let's assume that, let me put it back, really back, so, one of us decided that we're going to go on a program to represent the city on the meeting. And, and, well, I would drink, but it gets so drunk that it just completely misbehaves and it just does, it's completely inappropriate, while in the meeting. Well, I think that needs to be the code. And I don't think they need to say, why, when you're a citizen, you need to do whatever you want. No, when you're representing the city, this is the way that we expect you to act.
Can I make a question, clarification? You know, we've had council people walk from the diocese and speak as citizens, both, I think, former councilwoman Walker and Mr. Conway. I don't see that, I don't see how one can turn off being a city council in the chambers here. So what's the clarification on that, in terms of ethically? Because that's kind of what you're talking about when you're a city council, representing the city. Can you just walk out and suddenly say, okay, I'm going to represent the city? I'd like to get a big one.
I'm pretty honest, but I have an idea.
I mean, generally that only happens if the council person has a conflict and has had to leave the room and then appears with a member of the public to comment on that. And then.
But not necessarily to walk down and then suddenly speak as a city citizen?
Of city issues. Well, but, I mean, the council members should be able to speak from the diocese as, I mean, they are a resident as well as a council member.
But they never stop being a city council?
Right.
And you never stop giving up your First Amendment right as a citizen, even though you are elected to the council?
See, but the difference.
Well, unless you're conducting business on behalf of the city. Just because you're elected doesn't mean that you don't have a right to speak as a citizen.
Right, I just, I'm just confused about why you would go down through this versus sticking from up here.
See, again, see, that's the ethical stuff, what's ethical, not ethical, which?
But I'm not sure why would that be considered unethical?
It could be unethical because it could be drama. And it could be political drama. And so which could be unethical? Or if suddenly you come down, as Mr. Conway did, and accused the mayor of actually crime, and as a citizen?
She's not accused of a crime, Jamie, should it?
Okay, well, my opinion is if you pressure someone to fire somebody and you're the mayor, that could be construed as a crime, okay?
You did mention the word unlawful.
Yeah, 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 you did use the word unlawful. So I'm not trying to retry this. What I'm trying to say is, here's the problem with Code of Ethics and whatnot, is that we do all this and then things like that happen, which are unethical, in my mind, you know? And it's unethical for a city council person to come and accuse another city council person publicly like that without, it's just unethical, without having the facts, without, you know, it's not due process, and also wasn't true. And so to just come down and do it like it's okay if you do it as a citizen, but it's not okay if you do it as a city council person. It's like, wait, when you did it as a citizen, you were still a city council person. See, this whole, I would prefer we just drop it until we, once you have another election and see who gets elected and let those folks decide whether or not they want to, or us and, or whoever gets elected decide whether or not we want to do a Code of Ethics.
David, the Code of Ethics can be used in unfortunate ways. But one of the things that will be the difference is, and perhaps I need to read this question down, I still make this thing and then we can ask a question. If I am a private citizen, then because my position as a city council, I have certain information, certain information that is privileged to me. If I use that information in the private setting, would I be in the process of, I mean, then I would be violating the ethics because the information that I receive is privileged during the full session, for example, regardless that I'm speaking as a citizen?
Well, I mean, I think that's confusing a lot of different issues.
Who do you think he's doing?
If probably disclosing confidential information that's separate, then a conflict, that's not.
Say that again?
That's not what we're trying to talk about here, and that, that's a problem no matter what. I mean, just like, a resident coming up and raising a racket at the diocese in public comment should be stopped and a recess called if necessary, and that should be shut down. It, just like if a council member gets out of hand and starts doing something up here, the same thing should happen. It doesn't matter who you are, if you're creating, creating a problem and distracting from the business of the city, which is why you're here, this is a business meeting, it should be stopped.
So we should never let you do that. And I think you know better.
Well, I'm going to appeal to two guys on my left to, to let's continue this after election, see who gets elected. And that would only be fair handed, to use elected and let those elected officials decide on it, whoever they are.
You know, Jamie, making this thing twice, whatever we decide here before the election?
Right.
We want to be accused of, of what we decide then.
Yeah, right.
So I will, I will second, I will, I will agree with you and avoid, and then let's the next council take care of that decision by the time that we know who's going to be elected. I will agree to that and put it all on the table.
Yay.
So I got all my.
Okay, thank you. All right.
So, so we know.
Recommendation B, two.
Councilmember Gonzalez, Mayor Washburn, Mayor Prokem Brooks wants to not take action until after the election.
Right. Yes.
You're saying whoever the new council is, they can make their own choice?
I mean, this should not be a political discussion. The Code of Ethics is a guiding document of behavior, it shouldn't be passed along to another body if we see the need, we should act.
Let me give you an example. Two minutes ago, two minutes, and I mentioned something last meeting. During one of the recess, I went down and talked to different people, I tried to do on time. And I was accused by one of the candidates that I was unethical, personally unethical. Let, later on, this individual, when it's all, following week when I said, you know, what about this and this, this, you said this, I've never referred to you directly, yes, asking, I am unethical on what? Oh, because you didn't stop Miss Pennella talking, she talked too much, she talked too long. And I was accused to be unethical for that. First, I don't have control of it. The mayor's the one that decides how many emails a person's going to talk. But I was accused of unethical of that. So it's already something that is political for an individual that is not even running for this election. So it's just part of the story, is that later on he asked me for contribution of his campaign and asked me to put signs at my house, and I said, no. But I, you know, that, I was already accused, so it's a, it's a really politicized, well, we like it, it's a really politicized, because individuals had a time to do that, and with a good intention, I agree with the Code of Ethics, but I think it would be better for a city to turn around and wait until the new council for a couple of weeks, three more meetings, we have two more meetings again?
Two.
Yeah, two, three more meetings, and we're not hurt to wait to see what happens in the election, and then let the new council handle that. And I will push really hard to get the Code of Ethics actually with the new council.
Okay. Thank you.
Excuse me, on your last comment, or question actually, if there were Code of Ethics and there were a Code of Conduct, who would be the sheriff, so to speak?
Yeah.
Who would, who would be that body that enforces?
The vote councils, the vote councils are the posse.
So city manager has nothing to do with it?
No.
City attorney has nothing to do with it?
Well, I mean, there are times when I might intervene if people are out of control, but in general, the mayor's the chair.
Okay, thank you, I just wanted clarification on that.
All right. Okay, let's move on to the successor agency agenda.
Move to Bruce?
I do have a speaker card for item four, five, six, Mr. Mulcoy.
Yes, again, Alex Mulcoy. My question is, is the redevelopment agency was changed to the Fillmore's successor agency right around February, if I remember right? And I think the whole city, the whole town was kind of in the dark as to what's going on with the whole process. They were paying about $4,700 and some odd dollars just for the last month on work that was done, but yet we never really ever hear if anything was done or what is being done or, you know, what is all this money being paid for? There were $3,500 in legal services. I mean, is there any progress reported?
Yeah, there is an oversight board and the successor agency is going to have ongoing costs, and maybe Glenda can explain a little bit of that to you, but there is ongoing costs, there's paperwork and administrative things that are going to be going on for God knows how long.
Has the oversight board met?
Yes, the oversight board's met.
Is that a closed session or is that an open meeting?
Open meeting, you can come to the next one if you want, they're posted. Did you want to address the?
Where are they posted, because I never see it on the website.
It's the same as the council agenda, when they post the council agenda, it's also posted that same, that same website. So whenever, whenever the, whenever the agenda's posted, so is the successor agency.
Well, I understand that, but the oversight board is separate from the successor agency. This is the successor agency right here, you find. The oversight board includes county people, citizens, et cetera, et cetera. And so how do we find out about?
It's posted on the website in the same way as well. So in other words, let's assume there was a, a, one of the successor agency meetings, they would have posted, let's say, 72 hours prior to.
And you could probably ask Laura to add you to her email list when there is the next successor agency, or the oversight board?
If I, if I may, I'm just going to the website?
Yeah.
And it says on line 25, city of Fillmore Successor Agency regular meeting, and it's posted in there. So maybe you go down a little bit, you will be able to see those things. Because, yeah, it's right here for the, I just wanted to.
Well, there's, you said successor agency, we were talking oversight board.
Sorry.
So, I mean, so nobody can tell me, I mean, are there minutes on the oversight board?
I'm going to try to tell you.
Okay.
On the website, there is an oversight board section, it does have the agendas, and it has what's discussed, it has copies of the, what was on the agenda, the ROPS, the original EOPS, the ROPS three, those are all on the website under the oversight board. The oversight board meets when we're required to have them approve something in conjunction with the successor agency. The last thing that was approved was the Recognized Obligation Payment Schedule number three. And at this point, that has not been approved by the Department of Finance for this successor agency, although we've submitted it, and so we're waiting for the Department of Finance to make their findings regarding that. Part of the costs that he had questioned are, we have an attorney for the successor agency, not for the oversight board, but for the successor agency, and that's Lee Bold McLendon, and they assist me in making sure I meet deadlines, making sure I get reports filed on time. filed on time. They review what I submit to make sure that it looks correct, and gives us advice on what needs to be done with the successor agency. Patrick Major does the website maintenance, so he posts the oversight board and successor agency agendas and minutes. So, my $20 is pretty reasonable.
And the attorney is required by California law, now, the attorney that, for the successor agency?
I don't think you're required to have an attorney, it's advisable to have a successor agency.
I thought they appointed one, didn't they appoint?
No, I mean, I think because the prior's the attorney, wasn't the redevelopment attorney who you think it would be, and that's why it's...
Oh, okay. So, okay, so, this attorney was appointed?
The lady uses a prior CPA and an attorney. So, when we're dealing with things like the ROPS...
The finances and the property.
And finances and the property and everything else.
It all has to be legalized.
Right.
Right.
And then, we charge part of Laura, because she does the successor agency minutes, she also does the oversight board agendas and minutes and sets up meetings, so we charge a part of her. And then, the other people through VACO, one was my contract accountant, and the other does payroll, risk management, human resources, and so we charge a portion of their salary. In addition to that, we charge portions of staff salary. We have a budget of $250,000 a year. That administrative budget was approved by the oversight board and the successor agency, and I don't remember what month that was, but we, that was required to be approved by both of them, and it was. And so, we're limited to $250,000 a year for administrative costs for each person. All right, thank you. Okay, so, we have a warrant list, I mean...
Move to approve warrants?
Second.
I have a motion in second, this is a voice vote, Councilman Conway?
Aye. Yes?
Aye. Yes?
Aye, motion passes. Okay, so I'm going to close the successor agency meeting, and we're going to move on to item nine, which is committee, commission, and board of course. Anybody?
Last Wednesday, October 3rd, at the film commission meeting, areas of topics for the registry of private properties for filming and film work, Facebook and their official website page development, all this was briefly discussed on general topics of trying to regain a registry to make sure the, their official website's updated consistently. There was also a brief discussion on budget status of the commission. As most people are well aware, we've done quite well this year with filming budgets, and local merchants have really benefited from the increase in filming. So, I'm very excited and very hopeful for the future. Also, there is a chamber and merchant liaison function negotiations possible. Do you have any more information on that?
I didn't get that.
There was discussion as to negotiation, so I didn't...
Oh, I'm sorry, what was the question? Sorry about that.
In respect to the chamber and merchant liaison.
Oh, they're still working on it, yeah, there's no, there wasn't an answer on that. Sorry about that.
Yeah.
Interesting.
The next meeting will be November 7th, so, that's what's going on in the filming world, lots of progress.
I'd also like to mention where there's something going on on Thursday and Friday, both days, so we, you know, filming's really picking up, and it all has to do with the palm trees, that's, that's the bottom line, is that they're really wanting to film downtown.
Next week is welcome.
Next week is welcome.
All right. Any other committee, commission, or board of course? Okay, so we're going to move on to item 10A, travel requests, travel requests, about item B, future items for an agenda, replacement on an agenda. Anybody have a request? Okay. Anything else? City manager?
I'm good.
Okay, I am too. So, I'm going to adjourn this meeting, and our next council meeting is October 23rd and 6/3. So, see you all then.